Call for meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for invocation. Pastor Steve Burgesson of Shepherd of the Hills Lutheran Church is with us tonight.
Let us pray. Lord God, this night we pray that you keep Fountain Hills under your care. Bless these leaders of our town council and as citizens of this community that we may be a people of peace and one ourselves and a blessing to our state and to our nation. Give our town council the wisdom and strength to know your will and to do it so that the people of Fountain Hills will have a strong sense of purpose and concern for others as we create a community of justice and peace. This we ask in your almighty name, God our Father. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Steve. We'll go on with a roll call, please Bev.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Legay.
Here.
Councilmember DePorter.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Yates.
Present.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Magacy.
Here.
Thank you. Next item is economic development. I have just two items that I'd like to report on tonight. In order to sustain our town and all its vibrancy, we must attract young families to Fountain Hills. There are many avenues to pursue to make this happen and here is one big step that's in that right direction. The town of Fountain Hills is honored to be named the 2016 Playful City USA for the sixth time. Celebrating its 10th anniversary, the National Recognition Program honors cities and towns across the country for making their cities more playable. Playability is the extent to which a city makes it easy for all kids to get balanced, unstructured activity and play. Playability encompasses playgrounds, open space, interactive areas, and so much more. One innovative example that demonstrates how Fountain Hills prioritizes play is by installing the Harmony Playground at Fountain Park. This new feature will offer a unique play experience connecting people through creativity, unique soundscape, and sculptural design in an outdoor environment. Another example that demonstrates playability in our town are the tennis court improvements. Through the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority Biennial Grant, Fountain Hills was awarded funds for reconstruction of all six public courts. We expect construction to start soon and all courts to be ready for play this fall. The town is proud to be recognized for our efforts in keeping Fountain Hills playable and of course fun. And obviously with that, we thank our staff who made this happen. We have an awesome community services staff and it's because of them that we received this honor. And my second item is that Grady and I participated in the Chamber of Commerce CEO Roundtable. Those present represented a cross-section of businesses and organizations in town to just discuss important issues related to the town and to the business community. It was the first of four that CEO Scott Soldout Valenzuela has planned. And that is economic development for tonight. And now we go on to our first presentation. Ranger Amy Burnett from Arizona Game and Fish Department regarding wildlife regulations and safety issues for neighborhoods. Grady, did you want to start?
Yes, I'd just like to inform the council. As you recall, at the last council meeting, we had a resident that approached the council and had expressed concerns about a tragic situation involving an attack of his wife by Havelinas near Awash, near his home. And the, between Amy Burnett and the mayor, they reached out and Amy is here tonight. She is the Information Education Program Manager for Arizona Game and Fish and she's going to be giving a brief presentation on wildlife regulations and things that people can do to be safe in their neighborhoods. And one of the things that we're going to do with this presentation is we're also going to have just the presentation itself appear on both Channel 11 and also on our website so that we can keep people informed. We also have a workshop set up for Monday and Amy will talk a little bit about that. So with that, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Ms. Burnett.
Thank you very much. Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, thank you very much for having me here tonight. I have the unique and honorable position of wearing two hats tonight, both a employee and PIO of Arizona Game and Fish and also a proud homeowner in Fountain Hills. So it is my pleasure and my honor to speak and when I say that we have a village and we're all responsible for wildlife safety, it comes from the heart. So I'd like to talk to you a little bit about what happened, what we can do. I won't speak a lot about the incidents, but I want to speak a lot about what we can do to hopefully avoid having this kind of tragedy happen in the future. I have Officer Laura Orshallen, excuse me, Laura Orshallen and Officer Curtis Herbert with me today. They'll be here to answer questions after, from the council, after I'm finished with my short presentation. So on April 30th, there was a serious attack here in Fountain Hills of Havelina on a resident in Fountain Hills. The resident was in the hospital for many days. She underwent surgery and it was a situation that was very bad, but could have been a lot worse. And I stand up here to hopefully bring attention to what happened and some things that residents can do. There was no blame except for the people that did one thing, feeding wildlife in this town. And we'll talk a little bit about that. But first, I want to talk about Arizona's wildlife and motivations of wildlife. When you see this picture, what do you think? What comes to mind? What emotion do you see? Do you see, everyone in here has an opinion about this picture? And some of you are thinking, "A nuisance animal that's in my yard eating my landscaping." Other people in this room are thinking, "A beautiful animal that I love to take pictures of and I want to get close to." And then there's everything in between. Why are they here? Because our landscaping provides natural habitat for animals. This is how we want to see Havelina. They're here because we live on the edge. We have a beautiful place in Fountain Hills. We're on the edge of the desert. And they're here because we provide habitat in our own yard that mimics the desert and so they come close. When we feed wildlife, they come closer and that becomes dangerous. These are some of the things that residents can do to attract Havelina to their backyard unintentionally, literally rolling out the welcome mat for Havelina, planting desert plants, prickly, like prickly pear, desert trees like mesquite. They eat the mesquite pods, fertilizer, seeds, ornamental plants, things that Havelina love to eat. This is not cause for alarm. That's what we do in Fountain Hills. What becomes dangerous is on the right-hand side, as you can see, when people feed pet food, when people leave out their garbage even unintentionally, when they spread birdseed or put quail blocks on the ground and wonder why they're gone the next day. And then the last one, I have a garbage again, but that just reminds me of, "Look what's on the ground below the Havelinas." It may be human food to us, but it's essentially garbage and we don't need to be feeding Havelina these things. These are some things about Havelina that you should know. Havelina have a really poor eyesight. They're like a big rhinoceros. Well, I should say a little rhinoceros, but they have the heart of a rhinoceros. They have a really great sense of smell. They are fearful of humans naturally. Notice I have that in italics, "naturally." They hate dogs. Dogs and Havelinas are oil and water. Havelinas smell dogs, they think coyote. Coyotes are predators and they're enemies. Whether or not they have babies or not, they're enemies. They smell dogs, they smell a poodle, they smell a rottweiler or shih tzu, they smell coyote. They're easily spooked, sometimes they charge towards you in the wrong direction when they're actually trying to just run away. Take a look at this picture, some of you fall on one side or the other and most of you are probably somewhere in the middle. You might be surprised to realize that the person on the left is actually doing the most harm. And the person on the left is the stereotype of the reason why Havelina were killed in this, in this case. We'll talk a little bit about that. You may not be aware of the law that's actually been passed for several years now, 2009 actually. It's unlawful to feed wildlife except for tree squirrels. We don't have, except for birds and tree squirrels. We don't have tree squirrels in Fountain Hills. So if you're feeding the animals besides birds, you are feeding wildlife and that's a crime. It's a petty offense. So what's going on here? Why do Havelinas become aggressive when they're fed? Over time, Havelinas lose their fear of people. And when they lose their fear of people, they become bold. Some of these bold animals turn aggressive. When those turn aggressive, they can sometimes attack. They told me at work that it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when the first attack would happen that I would have to go to the media with and explain what happened and why someone was seriously injured or even killed. I never thought it would be in my own town, which gives me more motivation to be up here tonight and honored to be speaking to you so that we can make a change in our town. We have to work as a village to prevent people feeding wildlife. So studies show that adults who are tolerant of people, adult Havelina that are tolerant of people actually can pass on that trait to their young. And what happens when Havelina get aggressive? Then sometimes they do nip and sometimes they actually have a response that we saw, like we saw the other, a couple weeks ago. Most conflicts, not all, with Havelina are dog-related. These are some of the things that you can do. Keep your dog on a leash, non-retractable. Be aware of your surroundings. Take someone with you at all times. That's pretty much good advice in any situation. Here are some things you can do when you're walking your dog. Walk in the other direction. Please don't run. Make yourself really big and use loud noises and you can clap your hands. You can have, pick up something really big and basically make yourself threatening to the animal. If you have a hiking stick, great chemical deterrence mace, that all works well too. In this case, that happened on the 30th of April, she did nothing wrong. The dogs did not bark. She did not have them on a retractable leash, she had them on a six-foot leash. They weren't barking, everything was calm. And we can easily point to feeding as an issue in this case and really we need to take it very seriously. Regularly fed animals become habituated. Again, this is, they become aggressive, may become aggressive towards pets and people. We get reports every week of pets being chased or injured by Havelina or coyotes. And when we, when it's a human-related issue, we take that very seriously and it's a public safety issue, we do remove animals. We don't generally remove animals when a pet is involved. So what can we do? So here are some things that we can, you can do if you have Havelina in your yard and they're becoming bold. Make loud noises, rattle empty soda cans, bang pots and pans. Basically, you want to haze these animals so that they don't feel comfortable around your yard. They'll go to your neighbor's yard. So you have to tell your neighbor as well to do these same things. A 10% household ammonia solution in a super soaker works great. One resident told me yesterday that she puts a rag soaked with ammonia outside of her door when they come around, so, when she smells them around and that keeps them away from the door. But why are they coming around? Why are they so close in? Yes, they're attracted to our landscaping, but here's the situation. In the cases where we've had people report nuisance wildlife, almost every case, we could connect to feeding in the immediate vicinity. I'm not talking a mile away, I'm talking within a few doors down. And that was the case in the situation that happened on the 30th. We had two people who were feeding wildlife, one admitted right there that he had been and then he stopped. Another person had moved out of the area two months prior. Havelinas still remembered that feeding on that street, on that very street that the accident, the attack, excuse me, the attack occurred. No violations, no citations were issued because the problems were no longer there. But as you can see, it's an ongoing problem in town that we need to take very seriously. We encourage people to keep their yard clean of things that might attract Havelinas such as irrigation hoses, fallen citrus. Some people say, "Well, I just feed the birds." But if they don't clean up that bird seed that's on the ground at night, that's when the Havelinas come in and they will make your house a regular stop on their route. What can you do? Please, 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 I can't ask you enough times to call. I've had many people since this has happened told me that they have had a neighbor or know of someone that has been feeding wildlife, either intentionally or unintentionally. Please report them. It could save a life. You can be anonymous, it's a 1-800 number and we, if everyone reported these things happening, you would get, you would, obviously we can't have 100% compliance, but I think you'd really see these nuisance cases go down. Everyone wants to see wildlife in town. Well, most people. That's why we live here. We don't want to kill animals. That is the last, ultimate last resort. We love animals here at Game and Fish, that's why we got into this job. I know that the town people love Havelina, love animals in general, and don't want to see killing happen. But when people are involved, we make decisions and we have to make choices. And ultimately, we blame the people that changed the behavior of wildlife. It's going to require an active and united approach by our community to get this to stop. We need to stop feeding wildlife. We need to not be accepting of people who do feed wildlife in town. I have a short video to play.
From market to market to buy a fat pig, home again, home again, jiggety-jig. The only problem we have here, folks, is that these aren't pigs, these are pickers known commonly as Havelinas in our backyard down here in Tucson. They're coming in every morning now for breakfast. They're eating the Alpo dog food that I feed the coyotes. They're in here cleaning it up before the coyotes have had it. You know, they're not afraid of us at all. Oh yeah, they, they don't like each other. Well, thank God I'm not down there. Wouldn't want one of these guys to let me have it because they have very sharp fangs or tusks and they can really cut you up good. People down here, believe it or not, hunt these things and eat them, but...
In closing, thank you for allowing me to speak today about how we can keep our wildlife wild. We want to keep wildlife wild and alive. And the best thing we can do is to discourage everyone from feeding in town, make it a community issue. And if you have any questions at all, I'm available to, I am going to be speaking on Monday at 6:30, excuse me, Monday at 5:30 at the community center. And I'd love to entertain questions. I'll also have my cohorts here from Game and Fish to answer questions as well. And it's, we really hope that everyone shows up to find out how they can make our community safer. So thank you.
Well Ranger Amy, I want to thank you for being so proactive and so quickly contacting us and helping to resolve the situation. I know we're all saddened about what happened because most of us, you know, we do love the animals and we realized that these animals wouldn't have been in this situation had not the humans stepped in and decided that they wanted to feed them and make them like, sort of like domestic pets. But you stepped up quickly, contacted me, and then you so quickly came up with this presentation, which I know you put together in such a short amount of time. I think the biggest thing that we can stress is that what I've been hearing from people is, "Oh, I didn't want to tell on my neighbor." But I think, like you said, we have to stress that you might be reporting your neighbor, but you're protecting your neighborhood. And that's what we need to focus on right now. And I think that's going to change the whole attitude of how people deal with neighbors who are now feeding them. I know we've heard stories about people going out and hand-feeding them corn and, you know, the animals feeling so comfortable that they come right up to them. So that's, it's going to take a while then, I would imagine, before we can kind of get back. Do you think that that neighborhood is safe at this time or?
I'm glad you asked that question and thank you Mayor Kavanaugh for that. We, you may not know the total, some, the media has been reporting nine. We actually removed, we had removed 13 Havelina in this area. On, the chronology happened like this. So on the 30th, the attack happened. On the 5th of May, we didn't, we didn't learn about the attack right away. It was a few days later, it was Tuesday. And on the 5th of May, we had our Wildlife Services go in and remove, they removed six Havelinas from within a half-mile of the attack site on King's Tree. On the 10th, we, on the 9th, we got a report of a near miss, a woman with a gray hound who was chased by three more Havelina. So we knew we hadn't gotten them all. Wildlife Services went back in, removed three more on the 10th, and then four more on the 11th, bringing the total to 13 animals. The tragedy here is that these animals didn't have to be removed. But the bigger tragedy here was that the victim in the situation didn't have to go through what she went through. I strongly believe that if people hadn't been feeding in her immediate vicinity, she wouldn't have been, had to undergo the traumatic and life-threatening injuries and surgeries that she went through. I played the video to show everybody just how serious an Havelina attack can be and how serious this issue is. Thank you.
Questions? Councilman Magacy?
I just want to congratulate you on an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Like every other city in town, our single biggest problem is communication. How do you get the word out? We've got maybe, I don't know, 50 people, 70 people in here. You're going to be at the community center. People who watch Channel 11 will see it. Have you thought about other ways to get the word out? For example, an op-ed or an article of some kind in the Times. Have you thought about other ways to get the word, because it's critically important?
Sure, I would love to write an article for the Times, absolutely. I could...
The editor is sitting right back there.
Call me. No, I would, absolutely. And I've written an article for the Times before and it's in there and other people have brought it up. But I want to write an article specifically, you know, expressing how, you know, this could have been a lot worse. I could be standing up here telling you about a death of one of our wonderful, wonderful residents who I got at the opportunity to meet. And she's just a lovely person and I'm so glad that she's recovering and it's, I'm not standing up here talking about something that far worse.
I do have one question and that is, what do you do with the Havelinas that you capture?
Oh, I'm glad you asked because we did send them in for testing. And the first group of Havelinas were tested negative for rabies. After they are, they're euthanized or lethally removed, I should say, killed, they are, they are killed. They are, their bodies are frozen and they are sometimes necropsies, but in this case, I believe they were just sent away for rabies testing and then they're disposed of.
If I may, just one follow-up. I didn't realize that you euthanized them. That's 13.
13.
I suspect we have many, many more. How do you determine how many to do this with?
And that's, and that's an excellent question. We don't know if we have them all. We know of two specific places in town. One is right near Malta, King's Tree, in the area of the dog park. That's where these animals were removed. We also have a situation where people have been feeding within the last two years in the area of Boulder and Eagle's Nest, Golden Eagle Boulevard. More than two situations of feeding and one letter written in that area. So there are two separate parts of town, there are more than, so there are more than, there is more than one herd involved in this. We can't know if we got them all, but we refuse to go in and kill wildlife for that, for the sake of killing wildlife. This was a targeted operation and we hope and believe that we got at least most of the offending animals. But the, really it's going to be time, you know, changing over time, changing the habits, changing, when Havelinas are no longer fed in Fountain Hills, that's when there will start being normal, natural, wild Havelinas again and that's what we can hope for.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Questions? And I know that Grady, we're going to be putting this on our website.
Absolutely. The website and then Channel 11 will be continuously playing. And we obviously are missing out on a lot of the snowbirds who are not here right now. And so Amy and I discussed for her to have a similar type of workshop, maybe in November, January sometime, once the population increases with people. Because we tend to believe that there might be people that are not year-round residents that might be feeding the animals as well. So we want to try to hit just about as many people as we can. So that will be the next step after the summer, I think.
Another option, you were asking about how to get the word out. We recently did a, we have a Peregrine webcam that Arizona Game and Fish runs and you can watch a Peregrine chick growing up in the nest. It's really cool at the downtown Phoenix High Rise Building. We've gotten a lot of interest and we had a live chat with some of our biologists. I would be happy to do a live chat with, and people from the town could chat in through our, through the town's website, through the town's Facebook page. And that would be fairly easy to set up as well and then people could ask questions in live time.
Wow, we appreciate that, yeah.
Sounds a great idea.
Sure we could set that up. That sounds like a great idea. So I guess at the end, the word is that we are asking people who know of people in their neighborhood to please use this phone number or contact you or contact the town and just do it as soon as possible so that we can find out which neighborhoods people are feeding them so that perhaps it's another area too that's affected. We're not going to know that unless people call us. And it's, it's good that people know they can do it anonymously if they feel uncomfortable about calling on their neighbor. But as far as I, my opinion is that any neighbor that is putting the entire neighborhood in jeopardy like this deserves to be reported on.
Absolutely.
So I hope everybody will do that and we will do everything we can. We'll see you on Monday too. Thank you.
Thank you very much Mayor Kavanaugh. Thank you. Thank you council.
Grady, good. Any other questions? All right, we'll go on to our next presentation, which is Vision Fountain Hills. Co-chair Jerry Butler is here with us regarding the Vision Fountain Hills Workshop, which was held on May 7, 2016.
That was just an example and I'm also technically challenged, not knowing how to bring up the slide on the computer here. Before I begin, there's a lot to cover and I know I have a short time to do it in, but I would like to ask the audience, since we do have a big audience here tonight, how many have heard of Vision Fountain Hills before this evening?
Wow, look at that.
How many took the survey? Fantastic.
That's great.
Good representation. I want everyone to know that this program started in January of 2015, so we have been at this for a long, long time. We now have 12 committee members, all volunteers. Happy to say we've got a great mix of our community in terms of men and women and we range from 39 years of age to the old man of 76. So we've tried to cover the full spectrum of our community. Last year in April, we were, the program was adopted by the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association and they have been with us since to promote this program on behalf of the community. The volunteers, well, let me begin or start over by saying in 2005 was our first strategic plan for the community. And at that time when it was adopted, it was agreed that we would do this every five years. So in 2010, we did it a second time. And we started in 2015 to do it the third time. But as volunteers, we slipped a little bit. We don't have a full-time staff, we work on it when we can. But in the process, we saved the community over $30,000 of its funds by doing it as a bunch of volunteers.
And we do appreciate that very much.
And I want to assure you, before I begin with this presentation, there were no hidden agendas, absolutely none. Everything was done because of our love, passion, and concerns for our community. Ah, that didn't work. Thank you again for the instruction. What we did in the visioning process was a three-step process. We looked at where we are. We did that last year in terms of a stakeholder survey. We did it again this year on where do we want to be, using the information that we gained from the first step. The significant difference of the 2015 or 2016 strategic planning process is actually the third step. Always before, the same process has been used. What do you want? What do you need? But we never asked the community and how do we get there? So this time, it was much different. When we... When we began, we began with the 2010 strategic plan that had eight priorities and 51 directives. We also included a SWOT analysis, the strengths, weakness, opportunities, and threats of our community, and came up with 28 community values that we thought we needed to include in the community surveys. Our objective was to reduce the plan to something that's more manageable and achievable, because many of the 2010 directives were well beyond a five-year horizon. Two months ago, Dana Sarr, our Strategic Planning Advisory Commission Chairman, presented to the community the survey results of the community survey, which was step number two, of which over 1,900 people participated. And how was it that we got 1,900 people involved this time, when before, we were lucky to get 300 or 400? Social media. Wow, what a difference it made in terms of getting the community involved. The survey demographics, the people that took the survey, where 30% of them were under 50 years of age, 41% were in the 51 to 65 age category, and there were only 28% of us over 66. And by the way, 59% were women. They had more opinions than the men did. The May 7 community workshop addressed step number three, which was, how do we get there? Before the workshop was conducted, there were 21 pages of a packet that were sent to all people who signed up to attend the workshop. The five strategic priorities shown on this slide were the focal points of the workshop. These were the five points that came out of the community survey as being the most important. Keep in mind that in the stakeholder survey and in the community survey, we had open-ended questions. The open-ended questions hit on some very hot topics that were eventually included in the workshop, such as investing in the town's long-term economic growth, expanding enrollment and quality of our schools. This is the first time that schools have been brought into a full community survey, and preserving the financial sustainability of town services. We provided fact sheets and solution worksheets in advance for those that attended the workshop. At the workshop, there were three major parts. We reviewed the community challenges and the highlights of the previous surveys that I just discussed. Where we are now was presented by Dr. Pat Sweeney for the schools, Grady Miller, our town manager, and Scott Cooper, in charge of economic development. So the main focus of the workshop was to discuss and determine the solutions. This is a picture of that workshop. Over 100 people attended. There were 14 tables of six to eight people. The median age was 64, and we varied in age from 15 to 88. This time, the women didn't show up as much. There was only 45% of them. The reports that I received back from the table captains, because each table did have a captain to control discussions, synopsis is that they were spirited discussions. It was an eye-opening experience, and the way the information was presented did make a big difference. The first priority, in terms of the community survey, that was the most important, is economic growth. What we have here are the answers to potential solutions to this priority. But as Johnny Carson used to do on CARMAC, as you read the answers, you probably want to know what the questions were. The main question was, what can we do, and what should we do to address long-term economic issues in Fountain Hills? Prior to the workshop, we came up with seven possible solutions that were then the topics for discussion, and what's shown on this slide are the top five, with the percentages that people supported, like development, develop a community, brand, and a vision process. During the discussions, five new ideas came up. Promoting adventure outdoor packages to attract visitors was one of them that I highlighted, and encouraging a microbrewery or two. The second priority was that of attracting families and working professionals. Our challenge here is, the median- the median age of our community is 56 years. That means that half the people are under 56. One in four households have children, and in the last 10 years, the largest population gain has been in the 65-plus age group. Those are the challenges affecting priority number two. Again, we presented seven possible solutions to get discussions going, and again, I've shown here the top five. During the discussions, another five new ideas surfaced, such as clean up the Google search for Fountain Hills, and aggressively use social media, since it proved so successful thus far. Priority number three are our schools. And even though schools are not the responsibility of this town council, they were a hot topic in the two previous surveys. The challenges are declining enrollment, aging demographics in our community, a state-imposed school funding limitations, and a lack of affordable housing for young families. So there are some areas that maybe the town can get involved in to help the schools. In this case, 12 possible solutions were offered, and eight new ideas were generated during the workshop, which says there was a lot, a lot of interest in our schools. One of the ideas coming up from the- offered in the workshop was to add a technical and vocational campus to our community, and be more aggressive in promoting the tax credit program to achieve or to find more funds for them. The fourth priority is the town's infrastructure, and the challenge here is that the town's infrastructure, the maintenance element, has been trimmed to $5.2 million, done mainly by deferring maintenance. So the question that was asked is, is it time to invest more in our infrastructure? And if so, where and how should the increase be paid for? The three areas where the most investments were determined to be needed were in streets, our fountain, and the parks. There were two other areas, such as dams and washes, and the buildings like the one we're in tonight. They did not receive a more favorable vote. In this area, 12, okay, in this area, there were four possible solutions offered, and six new ideas came up. Two of the main ideas or solutions are shown here on the slide, of implementing a primary property tax and increasing parking user fees. Some ideas that came up at the workshop would be to have the sanitary district take over the lake and fountain operations and fountain park, and organize a volunteer adopt a wash program for routine maintenance of the washes to help save money. The last, number five priority, is financial stability. The leading question in this subject is, how should we address a forecasted $5.9 million operations deficit during the next five years? What services should be cut? Back in 2008, the community's opinion about the town was it did not have a revenue problem, rather it had a spending problem. The general agreement today is, we can no longer cut town services. We are facing a revenue problem. And three potential solutions were outlined, and six new ideas did surface during the workshop. Those ideas included, reevaluate the cost of public ser- of police services, and adopt another parcel fee like that that was done for the environmental services. The real question facing our town is, what if new revenues are not popular? What's Plan B? In the survey of the community workshop participants, 91% supported a primary property tax, 63% liked the idea of a public safety fee. And I want you to note that 78% were against increasing our sales taxes. The underlying drivers that we took away from the workshop was that communications, or lack thereof, are a common driver in the results highlighted, plus an overwhelming support to attract more full-time residents to Fountain Hills. Regarding communications, Vision Fountain Hills, a volunteer group, reached out to every resident in town, and as I mentioned earlier, we did save the town over $30,000. So on behalf of the Vision Fountain Hills program, because our work is not done, after July 1, we have more work to do, in conjunction with the town, with SPAC, with the community. I'd like to have you please include at least $5,000 in next year's budget to help us promote this program as we go forward. Was the workshop a success? I'm going to let you read this testimonial that was sent in unsolicited after the workshop, from a gentleman who arrived at the workshop questioning, what would we be able to accomplish? Was it worth his time? So please read this, if you would. It's very powerful, and I can add to it. In terms of answering that question, was the workshop a success? From the morning session, only one person failed to return after lunch. We kept everyone involved at the workshop. We believe that there's a strong need to maintain the momentum that we've got going. And I think we all know that changes take time, and time is getting short in some cases. We'd like to propose that key facilitators be organized, of the town, the school district, the Chamber of Commerce, and FHCCA community representatives, to go more to an in-depth discussion, because to date, we've tried to keep everyone at about a 30,000-foot level. We didn't want to get down talking about a theater, a swimming pool. We didn't want to get to that level. But we need more involvement from everyone, and we need to get together at the same time, because the true stakeholders are we, the community. So we're not done. There's a lot more work to be done. These are the volunteers that have made up your current Vision Fountain Hills Committee, again, supported by FHCCA. We'd like to ask more people, now that they've been through the survey, the workshop, to get involved, to join the movement, to be heard. And I know I've covered a lot of information in a short time here, and overextended my time. But on Monday, we should have on visionfh.org all of the results of the community workshop, the surveys, and the presentation tonight. So I'd like to- I don't know how many Vision Fountain Hills committee members are here or FHCCA representatives, but if you are, would you stand, please?
There's a few out there. I can see them, yeah. Denise Story.
And with them backing me up, I'll be happy to try to take on any questions.
Well, I guess I speak for everybody when I say that this was a huge undertaking. And when you first came here and said you wanted to do this, you know, a lot of people in the past have offered to do what you did. But when we looked at who your volunteers were, and considering how much you've already done and come through for the town, I know I personally knew that it was going to be a success. So, but it was a lot of work. It was- it was incredible what you were able to put together, and I know we're all very grateful for the amount of time that this took. And- and your team was just- was absolutely incredible. For the three of us who were there that day, myself and Councilman Yates and Councilman DePorter, I was just wondering if the two of you had any comment, or anything you wanted to say about that day with the workshop, that you were there?
Madam Mayor.
Would you want to?
Obviously, huge kudos. Wonderful organization, wonderful event. I- I know when you and I had spoken, I had the opportunity, and I apologize, I was a week or so late. I just sent Jerry some updated demographics on the town and retail leakage, and I know you might be able to use that. I cringe when I hear that our average age, and I have nothing against 55. I hope to be one at one point.
Better not.
But- but to echo Dana Sarr, I've been- I've been the kid in this town, and I've lived here for almost 15 years now, because the age keeps going up. And I don't mean that disrespectfully, but it's just, you know, one thing that I wanted to show everybody, and hope you can use that information. But wonderful, wonderful job. Thank you.
Now, let's hear from the real kid.
Yeah, exactly.
He's got 10 years on me. And I think your age is younger. I think, yeah, see, look at Johnny. He's younger than that. He's under 39, so your age is actually a little lower. Tremendous workshop, and I couldn't agree more with the gentleman who wrote you the unsolicited email. It's a tremendous lift to put something like that together. I totally support the funds or whatever you need to continue this tremendous momentum moving forward. I think it's a fantastic testament to the people that put it together, and then everyone who spent 10 bucks to show up and spent six to eight hours of their day with you. Hopefully, I'm not the- I think I'm the one that you lost after lunch, and it was only kid-related, so I promise, I would have stayed. But it was a fantastic, fantastic-
You were just a helper.
I was just a helper, right.
You didn't count you.
You had the shot for Mother's Day.
I did, it was Mother's Day. But just a tremendous job, and I applaud you all. Thank you so much.
Well, to the audience who was not- who were not at the workshop, there were probably 800 hours of people's time spent in that workshop discussing all of these options and these alternatives. The committee itself, leading up to this, has spent several thousand hours putting it together.
Sure.
So if you could, next year, allocate maybe 5,000 in your budget for SPAC, for whatever goes forth, I would sure appreciate it. I understand there may not be anything in there as of this moment.
And I guess the big question is, where are you going from here? What do you say is our next step?
We need to continue on with communications, because as much as we have tried to reach out to people, it's just like what the council does in trying to reach out to the community. You know you don't reach them all the first time, and you tap into a few more the second time. We, even though we sent a postcard to every home, I have talked to people that said, well, I didn't get one. I find that hard to believe, but that's what they told me, and some people didn't know about the workshop until the morning of the workshop. So communications, and further the advancement of what we're trying to accomplish and the attention we're trying to bring to the community about our community, is what we're wanting to do next year.
Okay. So will your committee stay together and move us on to the next step?
We will stay together. We will work with SPAC, your Strategic Planning Advisory Commission, because their charge now is to take the information that we have acquired and put it together in the terms of a formal strategic plan for 2016 that will have some of the directives. What we hope will be done this time, unlike previous strategic plans, is we'd like to see all of the directives begin with an action word, something that's powerful. Because what we heard during the community survey, some people have said, we've been down this road before, we've taken surveys, and nothing happens. And I probably can assure you that if nothing happens this time, there will be no need to have another community survey. So make it doable, make it achievable in the next five years, and make it noticeable.
Okay. Anyone else have a question for Jerry or a comment? Okay. I think we give you a nice round of applause. All right, now we have introduction of Assistant Fire Chief Dave Ott as the new fire chief. There you are back there. Come on up. Come on up. No, 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 you can't wait from the back. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, before you tonight, we wanted to have an opportunity to introduce to you the new fire chief. I know he's a familiar face. Chief Ott has been with our fire department for the last three years as the assistant chief. He has close to 30 years, just under 30 years, I think 26 years of work experience in the fire services area. fire services area, working at a number of other respected fire agencies. This was quite a competitive process. Under the terms of our Rural Metro contract, who supplies the staffing and leadership for our Fire Department, they went through a national search, and they found 26 finalists for this position. And this was great. There were Fire Chiefs from all across the country, and particularly from the Western United States. And it speaks very highly of Chief Ott, because he was in the top three. And the way the contract works is I had the opportunity to interview the three finalists, and it was very clear without a doubt that Chief Ott was heads and shoulders above any of the other finalists. So with that, as everyone knows, Chief Randy Roberts is going to be retiring, and that is why we went through this process. His last day will be June 10. But with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Chief Ott, and if you have any remarks or anything you'd like to add.
Mayor Kavanaugh, council, I'll keep this brief, because I know we've got a long meeting ahead of us, but I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve my community with the pride and honor that my fire service career has been based on. And in true fireman fashion, I want to thank everybody for coming out and welcoming me. And I also like to be in front of the vision group, because I think that my career as it moves on is going to be a vision for the fire service in Fountain Hills as well. So, thank you.
Outstanding. All right. Councilman Brown?
And Mayor, if I may, I just want to let you know, we do have a formal recognition of the outgoing retiring chief on June 2. So that will be coming up.
Thank you, Mayor. Grady, you did an excellent job with this selection. I've had the opportunity to work with Chief Ott now for four or five years, and he's done all of the inspections, and he is a stand-up guy. He Fountain Hills all over, and I think you did an excellent job with that selection.
Thank you.
Good job, Dave.
All right. Next, we have quarterly budget report by Finance Director Craig Riedolfi for the fiscal year 2015-16, quarter ending March 31, 2016. Now, you're going to make this fun, right, Craig?
Absolutely, and Chief Ott took my thunder away. I thought they were all here for the budget report. Mayor Kavanaugh, members of council, this is our nine-month quarterly budget report to see where we are, how the town is tracking for the current year. For all revenues, for the nine months ending March 31, totaling 17.2 million. The general fund, the operating fund, is the town's main fund and is used to fund all of the general government operations. Our operating fund consists of our general fund, the public art fund, and our two internal service funds and equipment replacement fund. For just looking at the operating fund totaling 11.1 million, as you can see, the majority of it is local sales tax, followed by state shared revenues. The two sources of those revenues account for 88% of all money that's coming into the town. Currently, they are slightly, or at 4.6% of our budgeted amount, primarily due to increased local sales tax. State shared revenues are a little bit below our budget, but the other revenues are just slightly, slightly above where they were, and our local sales tax is 6.8% over our projected State shared revenues of the 88% total, 32% of the operating fund is the result of state shared revenues. State income tax is pretty predictable, because it's based on the prior two-years' history. Our local sales tax is almost half over half of our operating budget, and it's over 7.6% increase totaling $6 million plus. Majority of the local sales tax is from retail, $3 million, an increase of 5%. Restaurants are also up 5%. Telecom is our second major source of revenue, and it once again is over 5% higher. Construction sales tax, 50% of the construction sales tax is devoted to capital projects. The remainder stays in the general fund. Expenditures, here are expenditures broken down by our departments. They are slightly below prior year, 0.3% less than last year, which is a kudos to the town staff for controlling and maintaining their costs. Where are other funds? The main fund is the Highway User Revenue Fund. Also increasing consists of Highway User Revenue Fund dollars as well as vehicle license tax dollars. Our expenditures for HERF, as you can see, 70% is devoted to pavement management, which is one of the town's priorities. These are the other funds. As you can see, the major expenditures are in the capital projects fund. Those expenditures are eating into the reserve balance that we had established and set aside previously in prior years for accumulated projects. Our fund balances, these are the balances, our reserves, almost $10 million in operating funds, $6 million in capital projects, and $2 million in development fees. Development fees are primarily committed to open space, which is the Adaro Canyon project coming up. Recap, revenues are almost 5% over budget and also higher than prior year. Expenditures are under budget as well as lower than prior year. Pavement management remains a priority. The fund balances, our reserves is adequate, and our economic indicators remain stable. At the last presentation, Councilman Magazine asked for some different presentation to indicate that all things are not rosy, that even though this year, we appear to be over budget in revenues and under budget in expenditures, the long-term does not look as well. This is our projection through the next five years. As you can see in prior years, the blue line, our revenues, slightly exceeded most of our expenditures in red, but starting in next year and following years, the expenditures are outpacing our revenues. Cumulatively, over the next five-year period, we are projecting a $5.9 million deficit. This is a composition of our expenditures. Colors are hard to see. I apologize for that. The top bar is public safety, both police and fire. The blue bar, the next one down, is public works, followed by development services, and then administration. And this is a breakdown of our year-to-date expenditures by the various departments. As you can see, law enforcement and fire and emergency by far are the biggest components of that cost. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
I just have a comment. I just want to thank you for the presentation. The one thing that I've been hearing from residents is that the way you've put this budget together in your presentation is very easy for them to understand, and I guess in the past, it was presented more of a complicated way, but you've found a way how to reach everyone, and it's really important. We want them to know where their money is going and that, what the bottom line is. So I want to thank you for that, because you've, I think you really took that into consideration when you put your presentation together. And we did have an open house. We didn't get a lot of people who attended, but we did have an open house if anyone had any questions about the budget. Anyone have any questions for Craig? Councilman Magazine?
Thank you, Craig. I want to reiterate something you said, which I had raised before. I was very troubled either after the last quarterly report or the one before that, that I read, basically, the town is in great shape. That's basically what it said with regard to the budget. And these things can be spun a lot of different ways. I can look at this and say, hey, we're in pretty good shape. I want to reiterate for the public that we are not in great shape. We have very serious problems, and I would hope that that would be, people would understand that. When we talked, and I don't know if I did this in public or with you directly, I think I asked if we could, in these quarterly reports, get a comparison quarter by quarter for the previous two or three years, to be able to track where we are. Can that be done in the future?
Councilman Magazine, yes, you did ask me for that. I struggled to come up with something that was understandable and didn't add 15 or 20 slides to the presentation. So I'll go back and redouble my efforts and try one more time. I'm not real optimistic that something like that, while the numbers, I can put the numbers together, I'm not sure that they're going to present something that is going to be readily understandable.
Perhaps you and I could get together, and anybody else that wants to join, just talk it through to see if it's possible. That'd be all right?
Fine.
Councilman Magazine, we'll definitely do that.
Thank you. I happened to take a look, and you probably answered this before, but I happened to take a look at the materials we received for the February 11 retreat, and one of the slides is budget by core services from all funds. And it adds up for 16, 17 to 31, basically 31 million. But now, we're talking about a budget that's just under 40 million. That's a big jump in a period of just a few months. Can you tell me why that is?
Two reasons. We did add, we did find that the revenue estimates for state shared revenues came in higher than we had projected, so we allocated those funds to the contingency reserve. And the second item is the question you asked earlier via email about the, what turns out to be the budget transfers. When we look at budget transfers, and they're totaling 6 to 7 million dollars, we need to take care not to double-count those numbers. Double-counting happens when we transfer the money and record that as an expenditure, and then we actually spend the money. So we would be double-counting that. So a lot of the 31 to 40 million is the $7 million in transfers, and coupled with some other allocations of reserves that the town manager wanted to make to fund capital projects and fund our facilities replacement fund.
But the facilities replacement fund was just a transfer, correct?
Correct.
A million dollars from, which fund?
From general fund to the facilities replacement fund. But that is part of the reason why the number went up, because the 40 million includes all the transfers.
I see. Okay. One other question. Again, you probably answered this, I just don't remember the answer, which is, in this packet for the retreat, we show a shortfall through 2020, '21 of 5.5 million, but now we're talking 5.9 million in just a few months.
I think it just was refinement of our estimates.
It's a big refinement.
But we also added a half a million dollars in additional revenues.
Yes, but, well, if you added revenues, then why wouldn't that 5.9 million be lower instead of higher?
Offset by the added expenditures. Without spending some time, I really can't answer the increase of a half a million dollars.
Could you get that for me?
I will do so.
Thank you.
Anything else? I'm sure Craig would be willing to sit down with anybody from the council who has any questions, and then he would have the material in front of him and on his computer that he could probably better answer those questions.
Absolutely.
I better be able to.
Of course you can. We know you can. Anything else? If not, thanks, Craig. Now we have call to the public. This is for items that are not on the agenda. I know there are some speaker cards for agenda items, but this is for those that are not on the agenda. Anything? No cards. Okay. And we'll go on to our consent agenda items. We have five listed, and I'd like to ask for a motion to accept, a motion for all five as written.
Mayor, so moved.
In a second. And I need a roll call vote for that, please. Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember DePorter?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Councilmember Legay?
Vice Mayor Legay?
Mayor 7-0. Thank you, Bev. Now, we go on to our regular agenda items. That's number six, consideration of an appeal of the administrative issuance of temporary use permits, allowing the Copperwind Resort to conduct wedding events and receptions, both inside the resort and on the outdoor event lawn after 10:00 p.m. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, I'll turn it over to Bob Rogers, who is our acting development services director and is also the one who serves as the zoning administrator in such matters. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This application is a continuation of the appeal by Kimberly Anderson and others of the administrative issuance of temporary use permits for the Copperwind Resort, which would allow wedding receptions and similar functions to provide outdoor entertainment and other activities after 10:00 p.m., most commonly until midnight. At the council's April 7 meeting, the representatives of the Copperwind Resort expressed a willingness to meet with the area residents in order to try and resolve, or at least mitigate, some of the noise issues. Council agreed to let them give it a try, and they continued that discussion until tonight. As a memory refresher, this is the site plan, which has accompanied most of the past requests for the permits. The event lawn, where the majority of the events occur, has the red star on it. As you can see, it's in the northwestern edge of the property. The nearest resident is approximately 253 feet to the east, is one of the condominiums. Copperwind submitted an updated report, which is included in your packets. The report includes a list of measures that they have taken to alleviate noise issues. It also includes some notes regarding the resort's relationship with the villas at Copperwind HOA. Highlights of that report are that they have turned the speakers toward the resort and away from the villas, measured the sound at all events to ensure a comfortable decibel level. They maintained communication with Ms. Anderson, who was the original complainant regarding the events that were being held, and they've ensured that the resort staff is maintaining the volume levels. Regarding their CCNRs, the report says that the condominium's CCNRs specifically note that the residents are buying near a resort, and the HOA agrees to indemnify the resort against noise complaints. It also notes that the HOA had previously voiced objections during the hearings for the special use permit, but they were, because they were against the resort moving away from hosting events, which at the time, they had considered as beneficial to the town. Staff's opinion remains that the occasional wedding reception or outdoor party at the resort is not detrimental to the surrounding area. Events are typical activities in resorts. While music and event activities may well be audible, they don't rise to the level of annoyance that should negatively affect the resort's business operations. The 10:00 p.m. curfew, most of the time, is probably reasonable, and appears to be the case in this instance, here as well. However, there are times when the resort hosts events that need to go later. Not allowing that to occur would seem counterproductive. Staff recommends to the council deny the appeal and approve the continued issuance of these permits with the standard conditions that have been applied in the past, as well as the four mitigative measures which the resort has adopted. The appellant is present, has indicated that she has two slides that she wants to present to you, and also, I believe there are Copperwind representatives, and I didn't see any yet, and they could make, I guess, a rebuttal. I wanted to make one other note. I did take a look back at how many permits had been issued. Since January, we've issued permits for nine dates, and then those nine dates to go over the 10:00 p.m. curfew. That was up to... That was up to March, when we received the appeal, which we stopped issuing permits then until this decision is made. So that was a period of 15 months. We had issued nine.
Bob, there was, the last time this was presented, there was a slide that talked about a compromise of 11:00 p.m. Who's, do you recall whose slide that was or what happened to that option?
It wasn't my slide. I believe it was from the Copperwind group who had that slide up.
So they just dropped that compromise and they're still going for the?
I can only give you what they gave me.
With what?
I don't know.
And what they gave you is?
The report that you got.
Till midnight. Okay. Do we have the slides from, is that Ms. Anderson?
Ms. Anderson, yeah.
Is she here? Oh, okay. Yes, she is.
You want me to leave my slide up? No, I'll leave it just in case somebody wants to.
So we assume that you met with Mr. Hines. Could you give us, just give us a little synopsis of what happened?
Certainly. I met with Mr. Hines and his event manager before our last meeting here. And then I have met with him one time since then to provide some feedback. We have had a few text exchanges and I think one, maybe two, email exchanges. Can I go through my?
Yeah, sure. Go right ahead.
Okay. Mayor Kavanaugh and the council members, thank you. My name is Kim Anderson, and I'm a homeowner, as I said before, in the villas at Copperwind. I submitted a noise complaint because I have two concerns about the resort's excessively loud outdoor music. The first concern is the music playing after 10:00 p.m. The second concern is how loud the music is in general. We have owned our villa since 2010, and outdoor, loud outdoor music has never been an issue until the past year, when the resort changed ownership. And I have here a slide to give a visual representation of the Copperwind Resort and the surrounding residential communities. This is the Hidden Hills area. The Cortabella homeowners, there's 97 homes there. We have the villas at Copperwind, there's 108 homes. Sunridge Canyon, which has 788 homes, I believe. And then right now, under construction, is the Adara Canyon. And the resort is right here. So the resort is surrounded by several different residential homeowners. The yellow markings that you see on the slide represent homeowners and HOA communities who have submitted complaint letters to the town of Fountain Hills. You'll notice the Sunridge Canyon folks, they're about a half a mile away from the resort where the music is playing. The furthest villas that are submitting complaints are about .4 miles away. And this homeowner is .6 miles away from the resort. Many of these homeowners wanted to be here this evening, but they have already returned to their summer homes and couldn't join us. Please also note that over half of the complaints came from homeowners living more than a quarter mile from the resort. And those would be the folks here, the folks in this area, and all of the Sunridge Canyon are more than a quarter mile. As you can see, the amplified outdoor music sound travels a great distance in the desert mountains and canyons. As an example, on April 13th, which was after our town council meeting last month, during an outdoor member event at the resort, one villa homeowner, who is here this evening, and he lives a third of a mile away from the resort, his house is right here. He was sitting in his home with the windows closed, watching a video on his computer with his headphones on, and he could hear the music from the resort. The same could be said for several of the outdoor happy hours during the past month. And I had been, like I said, in text exchanges or email exchanges with Mr. Hines and some of his staff. The most offensive part is the pounding loud frequency based sounds from the subwoofers. And my understanding from talking with Robert Rogers is that Copperwind Resort is the only business in the town of Fountain Hills that requests temporary use permits for the purposes of playing outdoor music after 10 o'clock. Mr. Hines told the town council that in order for him to be competitive in the wedding event business, he must host events that offer outdoor music after 10:00 p.m. This week, I spoke with several high-end wedding destinations in the Paradise Valley and Scottsdale area. Specifically, I called El Charro Sanctuary Camelback Resort, the Hermosa Inn, the Phoenician, the Scottsdale Princess, Four Seasons Resort, Royal Palms Camelback Inn, and the Weston Kirland Resort. And all of them confirmed that their outdoor music stops at 10:00 p.m. per their city ordinances. None of them play music until midnight. I was also told that the Phoenix Sound Ordinance is the same. Several of these venues do not permit any amplified music at all due to their location. As an example, the Sanctuary Camelback Resort, which is located on Camelback Mountain, a similar setting to Copperwind being located in the mountains, does not allow bands, DJs, or anything that's amplified due to how the noise travels in the mountains. I also learned that the cities of Scottsdale and Paradise Valley have decibel limits within their city noise ordinance. As an example, the maximum allowable noise level in Paradise Valley between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. is 56 decibels. In Scottsdale, the limit is 68 decibels until 10:00 p.m. Noise above these limits is considered unreasonable noise, which is defined as noise that a reasonable person of normal sensibilities would find excessive and that can be heard at least 100 feet from the business. In contrast, the town of Fountain Hills has noise complaints coming from up to half a mile away from the resort, as illustrated in this map. The Fountain Hills Noise Ordinance does not have decibel limits or any references to amplification limits at this time. This does need to change. For some perspective on decibel levels, every 10 decibel increase, for example, if decibels are increasing from 50 to 60 decibels, the result is a doubling of the sound. Decibel scale is logarithmic, it's not linear. So as an example, a decibel level limit of 68 in the city of Scottsdale compared to a decibel level of 90 in Fountain Hills means that the volume, means that the music volume in Fountain Hills is more than four times louder than the music volume allowed in the city of Scottsdale. More than four times. A 90 decibel sustained exposure may result in hearing loss. Currently, there are no outdoor decibel limits imposed on Mr. Hines, and he has been reluctant to commit to lowering the decibels even to 90, as evidenced by the information he submitted to the council. Mr. Hines has been allowed to play outdoor music that is, at a minimum, more than four times as loud as what is permitted in the city of Scottsdale and more than eight times louder than what is permitted in the town of Paradise Valley, which has a decibel limit of 56. In summary, it's easy to see why there have been so many noise complaints from so many different homeowners and HOA communities and why this topic has been raised to the town council. Mr. Hines does not need temporary use permits to be competitive in the wedding environment, in the wedding event market, excuse me. His competitors in Scottsdale and Paradise Valley end their outdoor events at 10:00 p.m. He can do that as well. I am asking the town council to discontinue issuing temporary use permits to Copperwind Resort specifically for outdoor events after 10:00 p.m. In addition, although it may not have been necessary in the past, I believe it's time for the town of Fountain Hills to establish an overall decibel limit similar to the decibel limits already established in the cities of Scottsdale and Paradise Valley. The town of Fountain Hills needs to establish noise controls as a matter of public policy for its residents and for the preservation of the public health, safety, welfare, prosperity, comfort, inconvenience, and most of all, the peace and quiet of Fountain Hills. Thank you.
Okay. The way we left it at the last meeting, which is why we kind of sent it back, hoping that there would be some sort of compromise?
Right.
Was anything achieved as far as the compromise on this?
Well, and you had asked Mr. Hines to reach out to the people that had submitted complaints. So as I said, I did speak to him before coming to the last meeting and gave him some follow-up afterwards. And we did try a couple of wedding events right after this last meeting. So on the 8th and 9th, we tried two wedding events that were definitely improved. But I would say there was no consistency during the month because we had the event on April 13th, so four days later, that was a member event. And as I mentioned, there were people that were sitting a half mile away or close to a half mile away that could hear the music in their house. So he's playing the music, when he doesn't put any constraints on it, he's playing the music at decibels way above 90. He hasn't been willing to put in print and commit to lowering it. And again, when I learned this week that the city of Scottsdale and the city of Paradise Valley have decibel limits of 56 and 68, and we're asking him to lower it to 90, I mean, that's a huge difference. It's more than four times as loud as the music that's played in Scottsdale. That's huge.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions from Ms. Anderson before we go on? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, does the applicant want to do any?
I'm not the applicant. I'm the attorney. I was going to call up what she said.
Okay, sure. Come right up. Just identify yourself.
My name is Scott Carpenter. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Carpenter, Hazelwood, and Tempe. And my client is the villas at Copperwind Resort. I wanted to address a topic that is sometimes confusing. It's this deed restriction, this HOA business, about whether the residents of villas at Copperwind have a legitimate right to complain about the noise, whether there's this indemnity and things like that. There is a document, the enforceability of which I can't stand before you and assure, but on the assumption that that document is enforceable, which I have issue with, but let's assume it's enforceable. The language says that there is an acknowledgement that the resort is an operating business. And it says that noise from construction and maintenance is something that cannot be complained about. So assuming the document is valid and enforceable, it doesn't really give you cause to say, well, the owners moved to the resort, and so they knew this could happen. They moved to a resort and they knew there was going to be construction, and they knew that there was going to be maintenance. It'd be like moving to a house that backs up to a golf course and being surprised that there are lawn mowers that move across the golf course. So that's a lot different than having no ability to complain about a 90 decibel level between 10 and 12. Even, again, if that document is enforceable, in Arizona, we have something called the Covenant of Good Faith and Fair Dealing that requires parties to a contract to behave in a fair way and to do it in good faith. In other words, you can't cross your fingers behind your back while saying, hey, I intend to honor the contract. And having events between 10 and 12 at a 90 decibel level or higher to us is a violation of the Covenant of Good Faith and Fair Dealing. They have to hold up their end of the bargain. The second issue is that under your zoning ordinance, you assure the citizens of Fountain Hills that if there is a request that is detrimental to the peace of the neighboring property, that you're going to scrutinize that. We ask you to do that tonight. This use is beyond what a reasonable person would expect living in a residential area, even if they did move to, near to a resort. So I'd like to ask you a rhetorical question. At some risk, I suppose, to my position. How often do you go to bed before midnight? That's the rhetorical question.
In Fountain Hills?
That makes my point. You make my point. The average adult does not go to bed after 12 o'clock every night of the week. So would the average person go to bed between 10 and 12? The answer is yes. Now, some people go to bed at 8 o'clock or 9 o'clock. Maybe they're teachers, maybe they get up early. But the question for you is, in trying to protect the residents of Fountain Hills, does the average adult go to bed between 10 and 12 and even do so on the weekend? That's the question. Because when you allow loud music in a residential area to go up to midnight, necessarily that will disrupt the sleep, the quiet use and enjoyment, the peace of the neighbors. So the concept that you are obligated to help this business be competitive in the competitive environment of weddings, something I'd like to address. If you allow these events to continue, what you're actually doing is allowing this business to be more competitive. You will create the outcome that they want, which is to be able to tell potential weddings, we're the only venue that will go past 10 o'clock. He can compete with the other venues on an equal basis. Weddings go till 10 o'clock because that's normal. But for you to give him the advantage of being able to market that he's the only resort in Scottsdale, Fountain Hills, Paradise Valley that you can party until midnight, he wants that extra marketing advantage from you. You're being asked to pick winners and losers here. He wants to win with his business, and the residents have to necessarily lose. I close with this. Mr. Rogers said that not allowing him to operate until midnight would be counterproductive. That's exactly what we want. We want you to behave in a way that is counterproductive to his intended business purpose, to disturb the peace of the neighbors so that he can make money and to do it with your blessing. So please, be counterproductive to his business. Please protect the citizens of this residential area and Fountain Hills and impose some reasonable restrictions on this property so that the events that are there comply with the norms of this community. And so that the people who want to behave in a normal way and go to bed before midnight and get some shut eye can do that. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm the attorney for Copperwind, and I thought perhaps maybe a good opportunity for me to respond to these comments.
Absolutely. Give me just a second. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Carpenter? No? Yes?
Mayor?
How about council? Could we ask council to respond to part of what he, part of his testimony?
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
Well, he was citing zoning ordinances and so on. And I want to know whether or not his reading of them is correct.
Mayor, members of the council, the citation in the zoning ordinance was simply you need to consider these things when you're making this decision. It necessarily isn't a directive to you. It doesn't frame out any kind of standards. It's a fairly loose standard that was, I think, properly recited to you. References to CCNRs, keep in mind, those are private contract rights. Those are not your decision. Those are how do the residents between themselves, how do they contract in order to understand how there would be mutual behavior? The Covenant of Good Faith and Fair Dealing is not involved in your zoning decision. This is a purely legislative decision on your part. But without going back and reading through the exact provisions, I think he was pretty much on point.
Thank you.
Do we have anything that pertains to the decibel level in Fountain Hills?
We do, actually. Chapter 5 has the noise ordinance in it, and there are decibel level limits.
And?
And Cecil, also, also, when Yates sat on that commission.
Do you know what the decibel level is?
It was, Madam Mayor, it was a few years ago, but I literally went around all the places with a decimal reader and took readings to find out what that, and all the times, the complaints that were coming from those spots were below what our level was, but...
It's a variable level based on the time of day.
Yeah. 90, I thought, was the cap, wasn't it?
I think what, yeah, I think it was.
90 was the cap, but truth be told, most of the bars and restaurants that were being complained about usually stopped their music at or around 10, 11 o'clock.
Okay. All right. Anything for Bob, Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Bob, in your staff report, it says, "Sound mitigating measures. Speakers must face resort building, no subwoofers, and overall music volume less than 90 decibels." Has that been implemented or is that just?
Well, that's what the resort report said, that that's what they had implemented.
And I'm just curious. Well, that's what the report has. And the young lady that was up here earlier, she's kind of shaking her head back there. I guess my question is, has this proposal been discussed with the HOA? And has the HOA provided feedback regarding this particular proposal?
I am not aware of the conversations they've had. They were both asked to come tonight to explain that to you.
Mayor, if this, if, what was your first name again? Would you mind if Kim came back up again?
No problem.
Because I think it's critical. We have, we asked folks to go back to the drawing board. We have, we asked folks to go back to the drawing board, and we have a recommendation here. I'm not saying I agree or disagree with it, but I'm just wondering how you would respond to that.
The slide that you're looking at is what, when I initially met with Mr. Hines and his event manager before the April 7th meeting that we had here a month ago, those were the mitigating sound measures that we talked about. And we tested those at two weddings on the eighth and the ninth, and they did improve. But as I mentioned, there hasn't been consistency in the noise volume coming from the resort, meaning he hasn't implemented those items. He hasn't included them in the correspondence that he submitted to the town council. All he really said in what he sent to the town council was that he would turn the speakers towards the resort. He didn't put any limits on the decibels. He didn't say that he wouldn't play a subwoofer. He said things like, "I'll keep in communication with Kim. I'll make sure the comfortable, the comfortable decibel level, and that we'll be diligent." But those specific things, he did not put in the document submitting to you. So, I read that as, he's willing to turn speakers, but he's not willing to do the things that we tested that improved the situation because he did not include those things in the document that he submitted to the town council for this meeting.
So, my question to you is if, in fact, the speakers were, and you're representing a group, so that's why I'm speaking...
I'm representing myself as a homeowner. I'm not on the HOA. I'm not any of those other homeowners. I'm just, I just happen to be the first homeowner that filed a complaint.
Well, what you're stating is similar to a letter we received from the HOA. So, your story's consistent. So, my question is, well, I'll just ask you personally.
Sure.
If the speak, if there was a stipulation and a special temporary use permit for the speakers to be turned into the resort building, for no subwoofers to be used, and the overall music level to be below 90 decibels, would that be acceptable to you?
That would be a great starting point for me. I can't speak for everybody else that filed complaints, but that would be an excellent starting point. And as I said, I didn't see from what he committed to and what he sent to the town council for this meeting that he was ready to commit to those things.
Well, yes, that's why...
Because that is my slide that you're looking at.
Sure. That's why we're here to decide where we want to go with that, and if we move forward with it, there would possibly be stipulations. Thank you so much. Bob, just another question, just to follow up. Oftentimes, when we provide a temporary use permit, isn't there kind of a timeline on it in terms of when we come back and review it?
Well, these temporary use permits are for one night only.
Okay.
It expires at midnight, basically.
Okay. So, they're coming back every...
They come back whenever they had an event. Like I said, we only had nine in the last 15 months.
Yeah, you had nine of them.
I want to make another thing clear. It's not necessarily been made clear that since March, I haven't issued any permits. So, if they've had events, they were supposed to have stopped at 10. Whether they did or not, I can't say, but there haven't been any permits issued until this decision is made.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hanson?
Bob, say it up. In your report, it says that they stated that they would meet with the area residents and provide the town, sorry, with a report outlining the results and that they're attached. But I didn't notice in his report that he'd actually held a meeting with the residents. I mean, it sounds like he only talked to Kim. Do you know?
I do not know. I was expecting him to come tonight to explain that.
Yeah, he's here.
He is, too.
Yeah.
He's the best person to ask that.
Okay. Okay. Then, at this time, can we hear from the applicant or you, as attorney? Okay. Do you come up and identify yourself?
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, Mr. McGuire. My name is Mark Goldman. I represent Copperwind. I'm also a resident of Fountain Hills since 1998. I own several properties in Fountain Hills besides my principal resident, residents. I also happen to be a member of Copperwind since the week it opened and continue to be a member of Copperwind as well. So, I guess I speak to you wearing a few different hats. One is a resident, and one is an attorney for Copperwind, and one is a member of Copperwind. First thing that I'd like to point out, and I assume that counsel, Mr. Carpenter, for the, we'll call it the condominium owners association, or HOA, or whatever, the association, just told you, describe the CCNRs. He omitted a key part of the CCNRs when he described it to you. I've provided you with, all of you with, a copy of the CCNRs, which you can read for yourself. And let's just go to what the actual language says and not his summary, which omitted the key word that says each owner of the restricted property. The restricted property refers to the villas. In the vicinity of the club property hereby expressly assumes the risk of noise caused by operation of the club property. He just said maintenance, and he forgot to say, I assume he just forgot. He forgot to say operation of the club. And then it says including without limitation, and then it goes on to say what it is. But you can read these things for yourself. You don't have to take my word for it. When they bought this property, they bought this property subject to these CCNRs. I think everybody knows what the covenant codes and restrictions are. These were recorded in 1998 when this property was developed. It was developed simultaneously with Copperwind the Resort by Sun-Tec, the same developer. Sun-Tec recorded these CCNRs, which apply to the villas and apply to Copperwind. In other words, there are separate CCNRs that apply just to the villas, but there is a common CCNRs, the ones that I provided you tonight, that apply to both the villas and Copperwind. So, every single villa owner buying that knows that they assumed the risk of noise when they purchased that property. Anybody familiar with purchasing property? When you buy property, you receive a commitment for title insurance. Along with that commitment for title insurance, you receive a copy of the CCNRs, which you're supposed to take a look at. And if you don't like the CCNRs, which are exceptions to title, you don't have to buy the property. But they've come in here last time, and they've sent you letters, and they spoke on April 7th, making it appear that they're victims of surprise noise from this club and how terrible this is. Well, in reality, no, not one single villa owner told you that under the CCNRs, they assumed the risk of noise. We don't really need to get into the indemnification part of it. That's none of your concern. All your concern is weighing the equities in connection with this. And do they have bona fide complaints? And this goes directly to the weight and the credibility of those complaints. Because again, what he just said to you is completely erroneous and misconstrues and hopefully accidentally wrongly describes what the CCNRs say. Because they say arising from the operation of the club. And what could be more expected from the operation of the club than hosting wedding receptions? In particular, these wedding, these temporary use permits, it's my understanding that these have been issued for the past 10 years. So, in connection with Ms. Anderson's complaint, she purchased this property subject to these CCNRs, knowing full well or on constructive notice that she had assumed the risk of noise. Needless to say, in connection with any of those purchases, part and parcel of the bargain for purchase price is, are the exceptions to title, one of which are these CCNRs. So, in other words, they buy the property, the CCNRs state they assume the risk of noise, and then what happens? They say, "Well, we don't like the noise. This is very inconvenient for us." Well, you know what? Too bad. It's unfortunate, but that's what your CCNRs say. And that's not too bad with a cavalier attitude by the club in the sense that they don't care about trying to accommodate these individuals who have complained about noise. To the contrary, they have worked hard and, excuse, they've worked very hard to accommodate these individuals, notwithstanding these CCNRs, where they really don't have a leg to stand on. Now, let's get into the correspondence and the admission that the homeowners association made in its May 31st letter to you. I am through, it's same counsel. I don't know if it was signed by Mr. Carpenter or someone else, but in that correspondence, they wrote to you when they were objecting to the special use permit that had been applied for, yet since then has been, they've revoked their application. But when they sent that application, the association respondent had said, "The resort," and that's Copperwind, "would now be admittedly limiting the amenities offered as they would no longer be hosting as many weddings and large parties, which are beneficial to the goals of promoting community togetherness of a community association and providing Fountain Hills homeowners with a local area to carry out their community needs." So, when it was convenient for them to complain that there weren't going to be enough parties, and they used the word "large parties," when they complained, when they were objecting to that drug and alcohol treatment special use permit, all of a sudden weddings and large parties were very beneficial to the goals of promoting community togetherness. When it's, that's when that was convenient for them, large parties were terrific. However, it's not so then when they want to object to these weddings going on beyond 10 o'clock, all of a sudden, large parties aren't so beneficial to the community. So, I mean, really, they want to have their wedding cake and eat it, too. I mean, that's exactly what's going on here. And then, they sent another letter to the, and I gave you a copy of that as well. They sent a letter on, I believe it's maybe May 4th. They sent a letter from, again, this is via their attorneys, to Mr. Hines, saying this regards something that's not at issue here, but they said, reminded him at the end of the letter, "You need to obey the CCNRs, and the CCNRs are for the benefit of all of us." And you have a copy of that letter as well. Then, when they sent their letter yesterday, May 18th, that letter says that they were like blindsided by this and weren't even aware of that, if you've carefully read that letter. And they send it to Mr. Flynn from the HOA, which oddly enough, Mr. Flynn, Flynn sent all of you correspondents on March 25th, objecting to this. So, it's a little hard to believe that they weren't aware of it when Mr. Flynn, to whom they copied the letter they sent to you yesterday, saying they weren't aware of any of this happening, Mr. Flynn actually sent a letter objecting to the temporary use permits on March 25th. So, to me, as far as anything in that letter for March 18th, I would be a little concerned about anything that was written there. As far as these decibel levels go, that's not the issue tonight. The issue tonight is, my understanding is, the issue tonight is, are you going to continue temporary use permits? Are you going to essentially ratify the recommendation of Mr. Rogers and his staff, which recommended to issue these and determined that they weren't detrimental to the community? What goes on in Scottsdale or any of these other areas, first of all, we don't, none of that's actual evidence. None of that would be admitted in a court. This is just hearsay. It's somebody claiming what goes on at the Hermosa Inn. We have no evidence of that whatsoever. The only thing we know is that we have a staff report that investigated this matter and came to a conclusion after what I assume was a careful investigation of this matter, that it is not detrimental to the community. It really doesn't matter what Scottsdale does or what anybody else does. The issue is, is it detrimental? And your staff stated it is not detrimental to the community, along with the other language there. Based upon that, Copperwind requests that you ratify the report and recommendation of your staff and allow them the temporary use permits. If there are other issues, decibel levels or other things like that, these can be handled in another meeting. They can be handled if there are restrictions in the town and Copperwind violates it. They can be sanctioned and cited for that. They have all sorts of remedies if the noise emanating from their club violates any rules, regulations, codes, restrictions, laws, or anything else in this town. The issue here tonight is strictly limited to ratifying the recommendation of your staff. Copperwind respectfully requests that you do so. Thank you.
Can you wait for a question? I just have two questions that I can think of right now. The first is, how long have they been using subwoofers?
I have absolutely no idea. That would be better...
I mean, is it a past year or two years?
That would be something for Mr. Hines to address with you. I don't know that.
I'd like to know that, Mr. Hines. How long you been using the subwoofers?
I'm not sure. Again, I bought probably one year ago.
Okay, so...
I am not very familiar with the music industry, but I think...
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hines, if you mind, could you come up?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Goldman. I think our questions now are for Mr. Hines. You do have a question for him? Okay. Then, let me just get two quick questions in. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I am not familiar with how long subwoofers and basses and other, other things that create today's music have been around. All I know...
They're not around. I just asked, how long have you been using them? Is it when you...
Oh, it's been since we bought the resort. But again, it's not our music. None of this is our music. So, when, when a bride comes to us and she's having her dream wedding, she picks her band, she picks her DJ.
Yeah, I understand that. The only reason why I bring that up is because I, when, when people signed the CCNRs, it could have been before subwoofers were even in existence. So, there's a difference between noise...
Absolutely. I have no idea.
There's a difference between noise five years ago and noise now.
And even beyond the technology of a subwoofer, which I can't tell you anything about, I think music styles change. And I think our population is getting older in Fountain Hills. That makes it more difficult to run a competitive business in Fountain Hills. And I don't know if now's the time to talk about this or not, but following our meeting, I did go back and I attended the next three events, and I stayed there till 10 o'clock at night. And I saw Kim at those events also, and we all had our sound meters, and we made sure it was under 90 decibels. And I was there before all those events started, and I made sure the speakers were turned towards the property. Where my hotel guests are staying, I don't mind that at all. We're being, you know, it has to be fair to everyone. I texted her. I spoke to her. She said, "Great. It's so much better." Several other residents in the villas said, "Unbelievable. That was great." Apparently, at a 4:00 happy hour by the pool, the last one we did of the season, the decibel level went up, and I think that's what everybody's referring to. I think that's the only event that snooked through. I was contacted by Kim. I immediately found out who was on site and who was watching that event, and we immediately turned the music down. You know, all I can do is put my best foot forward, which I did. And remember another thing, I'm not here to talk about the sound. I'll do it, but I'm doing it out of good faith. This is about 10 to 12. This isn't about 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, or 10. There's rules for that. I don't want to violate the rules. I don't want to hurt any of my neighbors. I live in the villas. I'm telling you, I don't want to do anything that could be destructive. If there's an issue, there's remedies for that. And call us on it, because I'm all over it. I can't be there every day. I'm not going to tell you I'm there till 10:00 PM or midnight, but I'm telling you, my staff has been instructed, and one of them's going to speak. We have several people who want to speak. And she is so sensitive to this issue, and it's a big deal for all of us. Now, all I keep hearing about is how loud the music is. That's not what we're supposed to be talking about tonight. And I will stand behind our efforts to keep that sound down, and I invite them to use any remedies available. Call the police. Call the sheriff. If we do anything that's inappropriate, I do want to know about it. I've given them my cell phone number. I have gone out of my way. I am not going to let the villas tell me what rules I'm going to have for my overall sound for the resort. If one of your family members came to me for her dream wedding, and I said, "The speakers can only face this direction," say, "Well, that's going to be in the way of my dance floor. I can't, I can't even set that up." You know, I have to be careful. I think what I'm trying to do is show them by my actions, I will be responsible. And if I miss one, if I'm out of town and a 4:00 happy hour by the pool is too loud for one of our villa owners, and, and remember, a lot of these people who are here complaining are members. They're paying their dues. They love the benefits of the club. Kim Anderson is a, they are paying members of the club. Kim Anderson is a, they are paying members of the club. They all love the perks, they love, they love the energy. Not a day goes by now when I'm not approached by one of our members saying, "Thank you for turning it back on. Every season I came, thinking the door would be locked." We've turned it back on, I'm extremely sensitive to the noise issues, I will continue to be sensitive, but this is not where we're supposed to be talking about how loud, where the speakers are going to face. I will stipulate to all those things from 10 to 12. Because that's all we're here for.
All right, let me bring up Bob, did you want to address something of what he, what he said?
I have a couple of points of disagreement.
Okay, we'd like to hear that.
Hear me?
Yes.
What I did is, I looked on my phone for the noise ordinance, our maximum level at any time is 79 decibels. It's any time, day or night. But our ordinance actually goes out to 11:00 PM before everything really has to quiet down. Our ordinance goes up to 11:00 PM before everything has to really quiet down, very similar to our lighting ordinance.
So it's 11:00 PM, 79 decibels, is that what you're saying?
79 decibels is the maximum that'll ever be allowed.
Okay.
At any time.
At any time.
Yeah. After 11:00 PM, it goes down from that.
Okay.
Of course, we don't really have a decibel level out there at midnight to test that, and I'm not sure how this was tested either. As far as what you can and can't talk about here tonight, this is a subjective permit to be issued by the town. If you want to issue it for an extra two hours, that's fine, if you want to attach any other conditions you want to on it, that's fine too, including decibel levels, including anything else. It's a subjective permit. So, I don't think you have to worry about things you can or can't talk about. I don't necessarily agree with either attorney's interpretation of what I said, but if you'd like to have...
They're attorneys, what'd you expect? All right, thanks, Bob. All right, we have questions from counsel. Counsel, who wants to go first? Go, you're up.
Just one question.
Who's this question for?
This gentleman, the attorney.
Mr. Goldman?
You mentioned, and you quoted from the CCRs, and you, a lot of your case, your case, your position is based on that, but didn't we get a lot of complaints from people who, where the CCRs are irrelevant, people who live in the area outside of, yeah, Sunridge and other areas? Why would the CCRs have anything to do with that?
CCNRs have absolutely nothing to do with people who live outside of that area, and people who have complained outside of that area. Though, I think those complaints are as attenuated as their distance from the club. I mean, sure, I guess somebody a mile and a half away, based on the echoes in the canyons, occasionally hears noise from the club. And you know what, I live on a golf course, I live on an arroyo, and sometimes I hear something that's from another home at midnight. It happens in Fountain Hills. But, no, I'm not, obviously, they have absolutely, those CCNRs don't apply to anyone else besides the people who live in the villas.
I thought that needed to be made very clear, because it seems to me that the underpinning of much of your position is the fact that people signed CCRs, I mean, got the CCRs, and therefore, I believe you're saying, "Too bad." And I'm talking about the people that never saw the CCRs nor would see the CCRs.
Those people have an absolute right to claim anything they want, as do the people in the villas. But the villas, to me, when they make that complaint, you should very much think about it when you're weighing the equities here, as to the fairness of somebody who bought that club with knowing those CCNRs, that was developed specifically with those CCNRs in place to avoid situations such as we're having tonight. So it, they only applied, apply to the villas, I never meant to suggest that they apply to anyone else, but anyone else, I mean, we just, I think we cannot put our common sense and just throw that away, that people who live a mile away from the club, how damage and damaging and deleterious is it to their peaceful and tranquil enjoyment of their property in Fountain Hills? Especially balanced against the need for Copperwind to survive. And that, which brings me to another point, really, the Copperwind, those villas, and I'm not sure how familiar you are with the situation of the villas, those villas, their value is 100% derivative of their ability to utilize Copperwind and...
No way.
Well, you know what, I never interrupted any of these people when they thought, and I won't interrupt them when they speak.
Everybody will get a chance.
And I would hope that they would provide the same courtesy to everyone else, though I think this is an example of their attitude, though. And go ahead, you interrupted.
Any further follow-up?
In any event, those, they have no swimming pools, they have no tennis courts, they abut Copperwind, okay? So, the people who, well, just let me finish one, the people who are going to suffer from hampering Copperwind's ability to succeed as a business are the villa owners, most importantly, if Copperwind cannot succeed as a business. And although you have, and obviously vocal group of people from Copperwind here tonight, there are 108 villas there, and I would take into consideration the other remaining people, less these, the 108 who aren't here tonight, and who aren't complaining about the noise, and think about that. This does not mean because there are vocal people from Copperwind here tonight, that most of Copperwind is against having these parties. In other words, I question as to how many people really, as fascinating as these town council meetings are, how many people from Copperwind who actually support this are going to turn out on a Thursday night to say, "Yes, we want these weddings because we're deeply interested in the survival of Copperwind." Go ahead.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, sir. When I came this evening, I didn't think I was going to be witnessing so much lawyering going on, and I appreciate it, you guys are both doing a fantastic job here, and just a question, I did receive your correspondence, and I did read that little deal there from the CCNRs, which I'm very familiar with CCNRs, and it said, "Risk of noise." And my first thought was, how do you define risk of noise? I mean, I mean, risk of noise, I mean, that was part of your case that you're presenting to us, that they sign this deal about risk of noise. Does that pertain to excessive noise? I mean, risk of noise is pretty broad in general, so...
Unfortunately, it is broad in general, it was not limited in those CCNRs, it doesn't say risk of, we can imply reasonable noise, and I think that's fine, even if you imply reasonable noise.
Exactly, exactly, you're implying reasonable noise, but what I'm hearing from the constituents is that it's not reasonable noise, it's excessive noise. And that's why I, that point, I think, is questionable, but I'm not a lawyer, so I'm going to stop there. The other, the other thing, too, is that all of this is about, for me, being a good corporate citizen, and the thing about risk of noise, we could argue until we're blue in the face, and, you know, people, well, we won't go into who can hear and who can't hear. And regarding subwoofers, I think they've been around since Led Zeppelin or before that, goes back to my time. But the risk of noise is interesting, but it's about being a good corporate citizen, and I think that's why the mayor asked the community and the resort to come up with a solution. And you do have some mitigating measures here, that I don't know whether they've been implemented or not implemented, and certainly, if we move forward with that, that would probably be more than likely a stipulation. But back to my lawyer friend here, detrimental to the community, we decide what's detrimental to the community, not necessarily our staff, staff make recommendations, and that's where I'm coming from. I need to determine if it's detrimental to the community, but a precursor to that is I am always willing to look at a reasonable solution being worked out, and that's, that's what this is all about, and being a good corporate, being a good corporate citizen, and I'm not questioning whether you are or not, to me, that's the defining scenario. Thank you.
Councilman Yates?
Thanks, Mayor. To keep the lawyers out of it, we're all big supports of business in Fountain Hills, big supporter of yours, as Councilman Legay, what is the solution? How do you make the balance? So what are you willing to do to keep this going if we were to go that direction?
So, as I stated last time, I, just judge me by our actions, and apparently, we had a raucous, loud event, the happy hour, but the other events were good before that, right?
The other events of the Thursday?
Yeah.
All right, you can't talk to each other?
Okay, okay, sorry, I'm trying to deal directly.
I know.
Where's my lawyer?
I just want you to know, we are, and I think you need to hear from our wedding coordinator, who's the frontline person dealing with this also, you know, "I'm willing to stand up there, and I've given them my cellphone numbers, I'll stand out on the lawn, if it's too loud where you live." You know, it's back to, yes, they moved to the nuisance, the old line, they did that, but I'm not saying anything should be obnoxious. I don't want anybody to be inside their house, I don't care if they're, when their attorney says that, when they want to go to bed, well, again, he's so out of touch on the situation, "I've committed to lower the volume, I keep communicating with them, we've been out there on the lawn together after events, making sure it's okay." Now, the big one that they're complaining about was at 4:00 in the afternoon, so that was a pool party. The villas are, I don't know, 20 feet from our pool? I mean, it's unbelievable how close the villas are to our large resort social pool. So that's a tougher issue. I will continue to work with them. Whenever possible, I will turn the speakers towards the hotel, which has been almost every single event, I think, except the happy hour, I know I can't look back or talk to them, I think they've been turned every time. When possible, meaning with a DJ, we've been turning off the subwoofer, they don't like it, but we've been doing it. A band, you can't do that with, I don't know why, but that's something with a band. So, it's gotten so convoluted with our, our Western member social, remember, this isn't somebody's crazy wedding, the two events that were loud were members. It was a member social, not a wedding, not a late night party, well, I'm sure it went till 9:00 or 10:00. But it was a member event, they make it sound like we're throwing concerts. We're not doing that, these are extremely high-end weddings and extremely high-end corporate events, and I will continue to go out of my way to control the sound. Between, what we're talking about is the fact that if people think a bride who's having her dream wedding is going to let you turn the music off right at 10:00, that's going to be an issue. And it's a cultural thing, we see weddings from the East Coast that want to go till 11:00 or 12:00. We see a lot of West Coast weddings, they're fine, depends a lot on the age, but I'm trying not to be hamstrung. When you talk about resorts in Scottsdale and Paradise Valley, and when they require their outdoor events to turn off, I don't know what the answer to that is, but most of them have large indoor facilities. Copperwind Resort was built with an event lawn, it was built right into the plan, everybody knows it, it's called the event lawn, or it's called the wedding lawn. We have, I don't have an alternative space, our weddings are outside, or we don't get the event. Yes, if I was the Phoenician, that would be awesome. If I had a huge space like El Charo, that would be fabulous, and for 10 million bucks, we could probably build one, but I can't do that.
Okay, we've got some speaker cards, so if you gentlemen would just take a seat, we need to hear from those people that came, is that okay? Or, did you want to...
I did have one, I wanted to confirm about this meeting with the area residents, and was told that you could answer that.
All right, I'm sorry, one more question. I didn't know you had a question. You need to nudge me a little bit.
So, after the meeting, I reached out to Kim, we met, I also, you know, there's 108 villa owners, so I'm not sure who, if they wanted me to have 100 meetings, so I reached out to the villa HOA. I reached out to them four times, no response. So finally, I sent, and I brought, if you'd want a copy of my final email communication to them, and I'll read it to you, because I think it's really appropriate. This went to the HOA board, and Ken Flynn from the HOA, the representative from Brown Management. "I continue to reach out to you, this was sent on April 9th, so I was trying to have this meeting and do this communication, zero response, the president of the HOA is gone. He said, 'We want to meet when we're all back, I'll be back in the fall, see you in September.'" I go, "Well, I want to meet with the rest of the board." "Well, most of them have resigned, we're down to just two members, me and Chicago and one other person here at the villas." The CCNRs, you're not even allowed to operate with three, with less than three people. I said, "I don't care, I want to meet," so I sent this to them finally on April 9th. "I continue to reach out to you to try and arrange a meeting to discuss the relationship between the villas and the club, I continue to get no response, other than that your president has left for the season, and you won't meet until everyone comes back to town. When will that be? Can someone let me know if a conference call or other form of meeting can be arranged? I am an owner of three villas in your association, and I own the neighboring resort and club. I am shocked at the lack of care and concern over working through the issues between us. As a villa owner and resident, I am concerned about the potential damage to my property values your actions and lack of willingness to meet could inflict. I am in support of the activities at the club, and so are many other villa owners. I want to make sure you have gotten the input of all the villa owners and not just a few power-hungry individuals. I will be forced to take steps to protect the club from the villas if you continue to support harming us. Please make it a priority to meet with me this next week and see if we can resolve some of these issues. They are urgent to the relationship between the villas and the club. As always, I am at the club almost every day, and I believe it is in everyone's best interest to actively work through any issues between us. As always, I offer my cellphone number if you would be willing to talk. Ignoring the issues and rallying the members against the club is extremely damaging to the club and villa owners. Why would you do that instead of sitting down and resolving things in person? I am utterly baffled and exhausted. I have spent millions of dollars on the resort and club, I have helped lift the perception and value of the villas. I am not asking for a thank you, but this silent treatment where you rally the villa owners against the club is incredibly damaging and insulting. Let's work together, please communicate." What else can you do? That's, that's to the villa board and the Brown management representative. It's a two-way street, and I can keep reaching out, I can attend all my events, I can sit out there till 10:00 at night, making sure I've got my little sound meter, but they've got to work with me too. When I'm doing that, and I get nothing back, but that's a good start, that's the answer I get.
Are many of them members of the resort?
Yes.
So do you have like a member list that you could contact them?
Well, there's a villa list that I was told I'm not allowed to utilize, so the attorneys here told me you are not allowed to use that list to communicate with the villa owners. And I just got that in another communication from them. So, I do the best I can. I, I show up to the events, I reach out, they have a board, they have a, they have representation. If those people don't want to meet, it's extremely difficult for me to do what I do. And Kim's a great lady, we've had nothing but good interactions, it's so, I'm not sure she even knows that the villa board will not deal with any of these issues. But I'm not allowed to turn around and ask her, so...
Change it further? Well, it's clear by the tone of your email that there's probably more issues between the resort and the villa owners, as well as just this temporary use permit.
It's become personal for a small group of people, I promise, I'll make this commitment again, I will do my part. I need to be competitive, my event lawn is outdoors, that is Copperwind Resort. You know, we have thousands of people coming to Fountain Hills for all these events every year, thousands of people get to know Fountain Hills through our group. Yes, they have the wedding at our place, but they're having the rehearsal dinner in town, they're shopping in town. It's such a win-win deal, I'm baffled we keep having to come back here.
I guess, I just want observation, that based on what Bob told us, there are some things already in place, 79 decibels, 11 o'clock hour, and that, those are already... things already in place, 79 decibels, 11 o'clock hour, and that, those are already in the books. So, I mean, those are two tools right there that address this.
And they have my cellphone number. Call me if it exceeds that. Call the police. There's remedies that, they're trying to leverage my ability to compete in the wedding space over this sound issue, and I will, I will do my part on the sound issue. And if one gets away from me, if I'm out of town and I miss one, a 4 o'clock in the afternoon happy hour, I can't catch them all. But you will not continue to get these complaints. You won't.
Okay. Um, let's, let's go to the speaker cards.
Mayor, we have one card that was submitted. They do not wish to speak, but they wanted the council to know they were against approving this.
Okay.
We have 12 speakers. Michelle Curtin, followed by Sherri Robbins.
Okay, keep your eye on the little box that'll tell you when your three minutes are up.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Curtin. I'm here, I'm a Copperwind member, and I moved here from Chicago about three and a half years ago, and I joined Copperwind at that time, thankfully, because it's fabulous. And I just wanted to say.
Okay, one second. Don't give your address, but do you live in the villas, or where?
No, I live in Eagle Mountain.
In Eagle Mountain, okay, thank you.
So, luckily, we're very close to Copperwind, and we've met wonderful friends, and basically, we want Copperwind to survive. And I was in advertising for 47 years, so I understand the economic importance to Fountain Hills. And I think that the weddings are important for, for the Copperwind to survive and to be vitalized. And also, people, as Bill was saying, people are coming in from all over, from the, I'm from Chicago, all the weddings that I went to were between 12 and 1 o'clock. So, I believe that if you have a wedding and you want to have a little bit extra time, people who are coming from other communities want to have a little bit longer for their wedding. And also, it brings out all the people coming from all these different areas who may move to Fountain Hills, because you, the beautiful view of, of Copperwind, it's just fantastic. People come here and they can't believe it. They go to Scottsdale, it's flat, they come to Fountain Hills, and it's absolutely gorgeous, and they really want to move here sometimes, after they've been to an event like that, a wedding or a special occasion. So, I just feel very strongly about trying to get Copperwind to stay in business, because it's important to me, and I'm, I'm a retired person, I love it there, I have all the activities, and I want it to survive. And I think it's important to let the weddings be the possible economic upward, you know, economic possibility for Fountain Hills, besides Copperwind. So, that's, that's about all I have to say.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sherri Robbins, followed by Nella Best.
Hello, Mayor, Councilwomen and Men. My name's Sherri Robbins, and I'm not a resident of Fountain Hills, I live over the mountain in Scottsdale. But I've been a member of Copperwind for the past 17 years. And I must say that this past year, since we've had a new owner, it's been the best that we've ever experienced. It's fun that we're finally getting to do some member socials and have some activities. And also, I was at the happy hour at 4 o'clock, and I'm guilty, we had a great time, the noise was loud, and they actually moved the speakers to face the building, I'll never forget. But we are finally starting to enjoy, and, I don't know, I guess it just kind of upsets me, because I feel like, you know, I want Copperwind to survive. And as I sit here in my very first town hall meeting, and I hear about the challenges that you're having with revenue, and you're wanting to attract new families, and this is a goldmine that we have, and for Copperwind to go through all of the struggles that it is faced with just baffles me. I just, I can't understand why there's not more community support. I feel like that we've got an environment at Copperwind that's like none other, and that we do have a competitive edge, because we have such a niche, I mean, such a beautiful area and a great surrounding. And I think what we need to do is to make sure that Copperwind does have the support and the resources that it needs in order for it to grow, so that we can indeed have the dreams that Fountain Hills has expressed here tonight, to have some growth and vitality. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next. Nella Best, followed by Tom Boyle.
Hi, everyone. My name's Nella Best. I'm the Catering and Events Manager, Wedding Coordinator at Copperwind. And I am probably the most passionate about this, because I absolutely love what I do, and I get very close and personal with my brides. And when I'm having to tell them that they can't go past 10 o'clock, I feel just as hurt as they do. Our brides that come to Copperwind are weddings of 125 to 150. We have 32 rooms at Copperwind. The rest of those brides are going on Airbnb. They are looking for houses and homes in Fountain Hills to stay close to Copperwind. That's bringing revenue to Fountain Hills members. I have brides whose mothers and sisters have asked, "Can you call a hairdresser for me?" in Fountain Hills. I have vendors, DJs, ministers, all from Fountain Hills, that I recommend. The brides don't have to use them, but I would say 95% of the time they do, because most of my brides are from Chicago, New York. I have guests coming in from England. One of my weddings, all of the guests from England, the couple was from Los Angeles. So, I feel passionate, not only for my brides, not only for the well-being of Copperwind, but also for Fountain Hills. And a lot of these brides, a lot of their guests are renting villas from the villa owners on Airbnb. And the reason they're renting those villas is because I have booked a wedding at Copperwind that's allowing these guests to come here and book those villas. So, I'm just here to ask if the rules can remain the same with the noise ordinance. I have spoken to Kim myself, she has my cell number. I have done everything in my power. I've done everything to keep the noise down. As a catering manager, if you go to any catering manager in any other resort, they are never there till the end of the evening. I am always there. And I have a decimal reader app on my phone that Mrs. Anderson's husband actually told me that he has on his phone, and that's where I found that decimal reader. And every single wedding, I have my banquet captain has a decimal reader, and we all check it. As soon as the DJ comes in, I ask him, "Can you please turn the speakers?" I go there and ask him to turn it down if I have to. So, I just feel that I've done everything, and I don't want my brides to suffer. Because if a bride's getting married and wanting to have an evening wedding at 7 o'clock, and then ended at 10 o'clock, that's three hours. Her guests have flown to Arizona, driven to Copperwind, and spent thousands of dollars on a wedding, just so they can have three hours. I know, for me, a dream wedding, all of these young brides, all of these older brides, this is, whether it's a first marriage or a second marriage, they just want it to be a fun, memorable evening, and at the end of the night, oh, sorry, thank you.
Just so we have a lot of speakers. Thank you. Tom Boyle, and I believe it's Dan, is it Totorica? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm speaking on behalf of my feelings for Copperwind, and I got to be very clear, this is unbelievable, that this business operator is being put in this place.
Okay, we can't hear you, so you need to go closer.
So, I'll get closer, Mayor.
And you need to tell us where you live.
I live 15 miles west of Copperwind. I live in Paradise Valley. I am a customer. I am a member of Copperwind. I spend tax dollars at Copperwind, so when I eat at Flourish, that's a tax benefit to Fountain Hills. When I stay in the hotel, because it's 15 miles home, that's a major, the bed tax benefit from Copperwind is a big deal. I think I speak for the people who visit the resort, that am so impressed with the remodel, and maybe some of you have been there before and after, hopefully all of you have, but that resort was closed in 2010. Does anybody remember that? Do you know why it was closed in 2010? There was no business, no one was going out to eat, nobody was staying in the hotels. There was no bed tax, there was no restaurant revenue to the city of Fountain Hills. So, I saw the budget, and I saw the budget in 2010 and 2011, the two low points in Fountain Hills. I think we need to promote businesses like Copperwind, because that is the tax basis that the residents don't have to pay, if the businesses are producing that tax revenue. So, I am one of those people that drives to Fountain Hills for that view, and that view's the best at Copperwind. So, I hope council doesn't force the small business to change its business practices. I just think that's a shame.
Thank you.
Dan Torecchi, so now I think we'll turn to the other side of the conversation a little bit here.
And you live?
I live in Sunridge Canyon.
Okay.
So, I am one of those dots on Kim's map.
Thank you.
That is a half a mile away.
Your dot.
And yes, I can hear it, okay? And, you know, I don't think it's necessarily turning the speakers one way or another, although perhaps it helps. Yes. But, you know, I've seen this challenge before. When you have the canyons and the valleys and things we have here, you know, the breeze blowing a certain way, it goes straight through. I sometimes I hear Sunridge Canyon like it's in my backyard, right? And that's fine during normal hours. But I certainly emphasize with this whole thing around the late night hours, and so I don't support this, right? I think you've got a process in place to deal with exceptions. I think, you know, the whole issue of business in Fountain Hills is certainly a wise one, an important one, but I don't think Fountain Hills survives only on Copperwind, it survives on everything else we have going here, and certainly we need a lot more business in Fountain Hills, right? But, this is not something that I think has a lot of bearing in terms of improvements to the life of people that live here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Scott Matthew, followed by John Kirkide.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I, too, am from Sunridge Canyon, which has not had much of a time to speak here. We don't have the CCNR regulations. We don't, we hear the music. I live on Sunridge Drive. I've had the house there for six years. I live there full-time, and I can hear the music in the backyard. When the beautiful nights of Arizona weather, the windows are open, I can hear speeches, I can hear the music. And I do not believe that is consistent with the quality of life that Fountain Hills encourages. I would like you to know that I'm very pro-business and a growth activist, and also a frequent customer of Copperwind Spa and Dining. However, a proposed change of a business permit must be in harmony with the surrounding of the community and neighbors. Copperwind application is not that. I am asking you to reject the Copperwind noise permit change for the following reasons. Fountain Hills is a beautiful community, the homeowners cherish the peacefulness and the natural beauty. It is not an entertainment destination. With late hours of music and speeches over public address systems, there is a reason that no other, a reason that only nine permits have been granted. It's because it's not in the Fountain Hills community values. Six years ago, when I bought my home, I understood that the Copperwind had a restriction of 10 PP, or 10 PM for outdoor music. When the current ownership bought the club, they knew that there was a restriction of 10 PM. My CCNRs are not effective. I live in Sunridge. Now Copperwind wants to change the rules and go to midnight. That is not consistent with the values of Fountain Hills. They reference to compete with other resorts, but Scottsdale and Paradise Valley limit at 10 o'clock, and they have weddings, so it looks like to me the playing field is level. We have a dark sky policy here in Fountain Hills. It's time to have a quiet night policy, and that's 10 o'clock or after. There's a reason Scottsdale and Paradise Valley and others adopted those noise rules many years ago. It was to preserve the quality of life in their communities for their residents. In addition to my, in addition to my knowledge, there has been no efforts by Copperwind to contact me, who wrote a letter. The mayor has replied to me after I wrote a letter, saying that she encouraged the communities to come together with Copperwind and talk about it. There, I wrote a letter, no contact has been made to me at Sunridge, and our HOA has not been contacted, and the president of the HOA of Sunridge has sent a letter of opposition to this. We also all know that parties go longer into the night, that alcohol consumption and inappropriate behavior increases as the night goes on. Guests get louder, the probability of drunk driving will increase, and we should not endanger the existing residents of the streets of Fountain Hills. In addition, why are the comments presented in Copperwind's presentation, like reorientation of speakers, maximum decibels, last call at 10:30, bar closed at 11, outdoor music stops at 11, employee trading? Why are they not part of the permit application? Also, in their presentation, they reference their location is far removed from town. Well, I think Sunridge Canyon communities are within the town, and I would like to be protected, like other Fountain Hills residents, from loud music. For this reasons, for the reasons previously stated, I ask that you carefully consider and reject the Copperwind's noise permit, and keep the peacefulness and the quality of life for all residents of Fountain Hills. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Councilmembers, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is John Kirkide. I'm a resident of the villas of Copperwind. First of all, I'd like to say, I pulled the CCNRs when I saw Bill's letter referencing Section 7.20. It's not there. It doesn't exist in the CCNRs. It does exist in an easement document, and it is Section 7.20. But that is a separate document, it's not a CCNR. It relates to the CCNRs. I mean, it, I'm not an attorney, it just gets into a legal mess, a legal harassment. I ask you to ask yourself, why did Bill even raise the issue? He's trying to silence the residents speaking against him. And I will tell you that I think, I'm a businessman, deal with a lot of contracts. I think that a court of law would probably find that the residents have every right to be here tonight. They have every right to complain as much as they want. Now, if we wanted to file a claim, if it was against lawnmowers and construction equipment, I don't think we'd do very well. But if it was against musical sound, I think we'd have a very good chance of winning in court. This is not a court of law, I won't ask you to make that decision, but I want you to know that the section that Bill quoted in his letter is not in the CCNRs. With that, I'd like to go into my presentation. First of all, the family-oriented issue has come up many times tonight, and I think that's a great path for the community to take. But, sound bouncing off the canyon walls late at night is not family-friendly, and I think you should keep that in mind in reviewing this SUP. One of the reasons this issue's important to me is my unit is directly opposite Sunridge Canyon Golf Club, and when they used to have weddings, it would be terribly disruptive. I would have to turn the TV up very loud, just to hear it, even with my doors and windows closed. Sleeping was not remotely possible. After several attempts to reach out, Sunridge failed, I resorted to calling the sheriff's office to complain, and they would dispatch a deputy, if one was valid. I was starting to file complaints with the city, and was considering filing a lawsuit or selling my unit. That is how disruptive noise like this can be in a residential neighborhood. Thankfully, new owners took over Sunridge Canyon a few years ago, and the problem stopped. If you allow Copperwind to hold outdoor night events, how will you say no to Sunridge Canyon and anybody else who applies for these events in the future? And I would ask you to put yourself in the situation where you can't even enjoy peace and quiet in your own living room or bedroom. How would you feel? The, Copperwind's letter referring to weddings and parties says the- The Copperwind's letter referring to weddings and parties says the HOA is trying to destroy our ability to compete for these events. Nothing could be further from the truth. We're simply trying to preserve the quiet enjoyment of our home. Copperwind needs to recognize they are operating a commercial enterprise in the middle of a residential area. Mr. Heinz knew this when he purchased the property. Other cities and towns in this area limit their sound levels and outdoor performances to 10 P.M. Why should the residents of Fountain Hills be asked to-
We can only give you three minutes.
Okay, I apologize for going long.
Quick wrap-up.
But, you know, I had to spend most of my time just correcting the information that had been passed out previously that was incorrect. I ask the council for permission to continue. I have about one minute left.
All right, one minute.
Okay. Mr. Heinz's letter to Copperwind indicates does not support from the Villas, he doesn't get support from the Villas of Copperwind. I agree. That's not because we did not want to see Copperwind be successful. We simply don't trust Mr. Heinz. Mr. Heinz is not trusted because he made comments like this. "If you don't like my plans, you should sell your home." That was during the discussion with Bill at the SUP regarding the drug and rehab facility. The lack of communication to homeowners and club members about changes to the resort have been monumental. There've been virtually none. I've been a club member, have resigned my membership. I've been a homeowner for 12 years in the Villas. I got no communication on any of these changes. No apparent strategy or marketing plan or continuous, and continuous changes in the initiatives that Bill pursues. First, we're going to be a tennis resort. Then we're going to be a fine restaurant with cowboy chow. The chef is now gone. Now we're going to be weddings. What's going to be next week? What are we going to be presenting for the council? So in summary, I strongly urge the council to reject the SUP for the following reasons. The noise will be disruptive to homeowners in the area. Staff recommendation was based on false and misleading information presented by Copperwind. Other cities and towns in the area do not allow outdoor music, and the residents of Fountain Hills should not be forced to either. If approved for Copperwind, how can you say no to anyone else in town who requests a similar exemption? The modest potential revenue generated by additional weddings and parties is dwarfed by the potential loss of real estate values and potential damage to the reputation Fountain Hills has for having an extremely high quality of life. I thank the council, and I appreciate the opportunity to finish. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Kirkide followed by Fred Cronin, and then Doug Larson.
Mayor, Council, and I really don't have any comments, but most of the things I wanted to say have been said.
All I need is your name.
Leslie Kirkide.
And where you live.
I live in the Villas in Copperwind. And the one thing I just wanted to correct about comment that was made is I'm sitting next to one of the people on the Copperwind board who assures me that he and Mr. Flynn did indeed have a meeting with Mr. Heinz. And I just wanted that to be corrected because I didn't feel that that was stated correctly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Fred Cronin. Followed by Doug Larson.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. My name is Fred Cronin, and I'm a resident of Cortabella at Copperwind. Have lived there and built there 17 years ago, and a member of the club at Copperwind since its inception. A year and a half ago, when Copperwind was in disarray, Mr. Heinz and his team purchased the property, and many of us were very encouraged that the club would expand and indeed flourish even before the restaurant was renamed that. Bill and his team have worked hard, made significant investments of both time and money to renovate the club top to bottom, and the results are outstanding, as anyone can see. But to flourish the club has to depend on multiple revenue streams, and we live in a community that is subject to seasonality, and the ability to offer music at special events and weddings is paramount to being able to have successful events of that type. It is not uncommon, where I come from, back east, to have weddings go till all hours of the evening. And frankly, I don't think it's unreasonable to think that weddings at a reasonable decibel level should go beyond 10 o'clock. I would encourage the council to either continue the practice of selectively approving events as they arise and give the club the opportunity to attract new members and visitors to our community in hopes of raising our town's attendees and residents and to experience the beautiful community we live in. Lastly, everyone who moved into the area knew the club was there and knew its purpose. And to think that it was not going to have weddings that went into the early hours of the, late hours of the evening, I think was a little bit unrealistic. I live, as I said, about a half mile from the club. Frankly, I've never heard the noise from music at any time in the 17 years I've been there. And in my opinion, to protest the fact that it's too noisy when you move there knowing the club existed and its purposes that clearly stated is analogous to moving near an airport and then complaining, gee, you hear planes. So frankly, I would hope that the council would look favorably on Copperwind's request to continue to evaluate these permits on a regular basis. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Doug Larson followed by Dale Thomas. Doug Larson? Not here. Dale Thomas. Dale Thomas.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am Dale Thomas, and I reside with my wife on Sunridge Drive. I'm not an attorney, and I'm not a member of the HOA that's been discussed at great length here this evening. I do live right around the corner from, around the curve from the resort.
Could you speak a little bit closer to the mic?
Sure.
Thank you.
And I fully understand that the council needs to balance the needs of the residents of the community and also the business community to ensure that Fountain Hills is a place we all want to live. But with that said, I have to say that we're opposed to the extension of hours of outside music being requested by the resort. We live close enough to hear and be affected by the noise, and we do not want to surrender our weekends outside due to the increased frequency and duration of intrusive noise. We also are concerned that routine granting of exceptions through administrative channels circumvents the intent of the regulations you have in place. Mr. Heinz must have recognized during his due diligence that he was buying a resort clearly nestled in a quiet residential community, and he should not be surprised that his neighbors would be unreceptive to extended hours of operation. He says the only way that he can be competitive is to host late-night events outside. It seems reasonable that he also evaluated the competition before making his purchase. He would have learned that the cities where his competitors thrive do not allow outside amplified music beyond 10 P.M. I hope the fact that the Planning and Zoning Office has recommended approval of this appeal doesn't suggest that we as residents no longer have an opportunity to influence the council's decision. Our preference would be to have you deny the resort's appeal and initiate an ordinance revision that would be more specific about noise levels and avoid vague words like "comfortable." We encourage you to set specific limits and close any of the loopholes that exist in this ordinance so that we can have a clear definition of what's appropriate for our community. Paradise Valley and Scottsdale could serve as valuable models for such limitations. We suggest that these events be, not be extended beyond 10 P.M. outside and eliminate this administrative decision-making process. After all, the current ordinance was really written for a reason, and we think there's a chance for you to clarify it and enhance it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, the last card is Dory Wittrick. Dory.
That's Ms. Wittrick.
Mayor, Council, thank you for giving me a few moments. My name is Dory Wittrick. I live, I live on Altaloma Drive. And if you want sound in the evenings, come to Altaloma Drive. We're right across from the fountain. And every time I hear that sound, whatever time of the day or night, or early morning it may be, I'm grateful. I'm grateful for the vitality that's going on in my community for all age groups. I have a few things to say. I was on the original development team. For those of you who don't know me, I own a real estate company here in Fountain Hills. And I've worked with the previous owner of Copperwind from the minute they bought it until the moment they sold it. I was involved with the development of their club. I was involved with the development of each one of these condominiums, and I sold every last one of them at least once, and some of them two, three, and four times. I just want to clear up one thing from Mr. Kirkide. You mentioned that 7.2, I believe, is the article in question, is in something called an easement. Well, yes, it is. It's in a document called Declaration of Covenants, Restrictions, and Easements, which is the document that you signed on to when you became an owner at Copperwind.
Villas.
I'm a member of the club. I have been since the day one. My member number's 31. And as I mentioned, I was associated with the previous owner, and I can tell you that there was never a year that they made money in that club. Why they held on to it was more a matter of pride than anything else. And that unfortunately is the lot of Copperwind. It may have been an ill-conceived club, but we are all extremely proud of it and the fact that it's in our community. And I think that we should be doing everything that we can to support it. You heard a presentation here earlier this evening about a vision Fountain Hills committee. I was introduced as a member of that committee, and next year I will be the chair of that committee. And one of the things that we've come across is that we need to replace our aging population in Fountain Hills. That's one of the biggest problems we have in our community. And if you don't believe me, try to sell a two-story home. And when I say aging population, I'm not being derogative. I am not being judgmental. But I am saying that our population is aging out and dying out. Dana Sarr likes to make the joke that when he moved here, he was the average age in this community. He lives here now 35 years later, and he's still the average age. And that's what's happening to our community. And we need to support young people like brides and the young people who may want music a little bit too loud every once in a while. We need to support vitality, and we need to support businesses that are willing to support our tax base. I'm only here to encourage the owners of the Villas to continue to work with the owner of the club, and let's make this all work. I have operated a wedding venue before up at the Torion property when I was managing that one, and I can tell you, those brides, they want what they want. And the Bridezilla thing, trust me, it's a real thing. And you know what? They're young, and they deserve what they, they deserve those dreams. So let's give them a little bit more time, other than just 10 o'clock, when we, the rest of us like to roll up the streets. Thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor, we have one more. Dan Kraus.
I just want to tell Dory that she wants to replace some of the older members of our community. I take that personally.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm going to skip through all this legal stuff because I-
I gotta have your name first?
My name's Dan Kraus.
And where do you live?
I live in the Villas.
Okay.
And I'm very close, probably about a block away from the resort itself, so I may be the closest one to the resort. All I've heard here tonight is, I think we all understand this, it's about money. It's about a business owner making money. There are several people here who vouch for Mr. Heinz and his facility from Paradise Valley. I don't think he can hear the music there, but I can hear it on my patio on a Saturday night or a Sunday night when I need to go to bed because I have to get up at 5:00 in the morning. I don't think we need to replace the older people in Fountain Hills so that he can make more money. The people that come to the wedding are not going to be people that, maybe some will decide to live here, maybe some won't. But all these great things about the bride, the other two people who were in favor of Mr. Heinz's proposal, I believe lives in Eagle Mountain, and the other one lives on the other side of the mountain. So I don't hear really anything about the people who are really affected by the resort, the people in the Villas, even Cortabella, the gentleman at Cortabella, he said he was a half a mile away or so. That's fine. Come up a quarter a mile from there and sit on your patio and try and relax. It can't be done. And I believe as far as working with the, with Copperwind organization, if I'm not mistaken, events are not supposed to be held outside at all in a residential neighborhood. Now, I was told that, and I don't know if it's actual fact or not, but from what I understand, that's part of the, either ordinances or something with the town. But you have businesses that have been surviving alongside the world for years and years, and they have suffered, if you want to put it that way, because they had to abide by the laws that have been laid down by the town. So town council members and mayor, you have to think of the people of this town. There might be laws and legalities. The lawyer representing Mr. Heinz, his own words were, "Who cares? Too bad," because you didn't read the CCRs. Well, I think each and every one of you, or anyone out here who didn't read the little fine print, does not expect to have midnight music, dancing and cheering and yelling. You also have five letters that were written by people from the Villas on your records that I found online that are all against this permit being issued. And I believe myself and at least three or four other people from that near vicinity are against this. It's people that are from 15 miles away and live the other side of Shea that are all backing this up, and they're members of the club. That doesn't do us any good. And as far as the fabulous lovely brides, that's great. My daughter got married two months ago at Sassy's, way out in the desert. They had a law that had to be stopped at 10 P.M. This shouldn't be allowed here. We need to think of the people that are living here, not the financial responsibility and the cap and the gains that this gentleman will make on our backs. It shouldn't be allowed by the council, and I ask that you decline the issue of the permit.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. All right. So I guess we've all heard this from every possible angle and every possible argument. And if there's no other council discussion, then I'm-
Question of staff.
Okay.
It'll be quick. I think the answer will be quick.
I should have looked the other way.
Yeah, you should have. Just for the sake of discussion, if, if this were approved, and apparently you have to approve each one as it comes along, is it, and let's assume that we have excessive noise and a real problem, what recourse is there for the council, for the town?
The ordinance says that they're allowed to go up till 10 o'clock, and I can issue an administrative use, or administrative temporary use permit for after that unless I get a complaint. If I get a complaint, it has to come back to you each time.
Thank you.
There we are.
Anything else? Okay.
Mayor, I just need to reiterate. I still find it hard to believe that there were these temporary uses permits issued, and, and there weren't problems. And now there are problems. So I can't understand why we can't go back and find out, you know, identify that and just deal with that. It's just-
As I said, I've issued them since 2005, and this is the first time that we've gotten a complaint, and this is the first time you get to hear it. And I apologize for that.
It's all your fault.
I know.
Okay, so any other discussion, or would anyone like to venture a motion?
Sure, I'll give it a shot.
Okay.
And then I'll duck. I move to find that the continued, whoop, wrong, move to approve the continued administrative issuance of a temporary use permit for outdoor events at Copperwind Resort not to exceed 11 P.M. with stipulations that speakers must be facing the resort, no subwoofers, overall volume less than 79 decibels.
Second.
I'd like to amend that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and now I have an amendment proposed to that.
I like the motion, only after, I don't mind having the 79 decibels to 10 o'clock, but after 10 o'clock, it needs to go to 69 decibels.
10 or 11?
Oh, 11 o'clock. That 10 o'clock will turn, will leave, as the town ordinance has right now, 79 decibels. But between 10 and 11, we will reduce it to 69 decibels.
Between 10?
Between 10 and 11.
And 11, and-
Because the motion takes it up to 11 o'clock.
And the rest of the motion, are you still in agreement with that, the no subwoofers?
I am. I just think we should-
And turn the speakers.
Madam, your point of clarification.
Is there a second to the, I need a second? I need a second? Okay, I've got a second. Discussion on the amendment.
Point of clarification, Bob or Andrew, isn't right now you're allowed 79 up to 11? So you're-
So I'm saying we will-
You said 10, did you?
No, no. I'm saying that if, I think we should shut it off at 11. I think that's a fair compromise. I think that the ordinance clearly states 79 decibels till 11. I'm saying let's, on the special use permits that are administratively issued, let's turn the music down at 10:00 to 69 decibels and shut the party off at 11. That's in essence what the original motion was and I agree with the rest of the motion. Turn the speakers, lose the subwoofers and try to get along.
Okay, so now I have an amendment to the motion and a second, so we'll have discussion on that first. Any discussion on that?
Just a point of clarification, doesn't our current ordinance allow 79 up to 11?
Yeah, you just said that.
Yeah. So in essence, my amendment was probably not even necessary because we have something in place already, but I just wanted to make it clear where we were coming from and what the stipulations were. I don't have an issue with moving it down to 69, other than the fact that I think that's going to be really difficult to start, you know, measuring all that stuff, you know, from 79 to 69. And I guess we do have a bunch of people that are running around with decibel meters, but-
Everybody has the app.
Yeah, maybe the bride needs one on her wedding gown, but, so I understand your intent. It's just the practicality of it. Anyhow, that's my comment.
If we're going to, if we're going to keep the music going, I feel like a good compromise, a good effort would be to turn the music down at 10:00.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Yates.
We're still discussing, I don't want a third.
No, we're still on the, on Dennis's amendment.
Just from a matter of logistics, if without a special use permit, you're allowed to play 79 decibels up to 11?
No.
It's kind of a two-part process. The sound or the noise ordinance says 79 up to 11:00 PM, but the outdoor activities rule is till 10:00.
I'm with you. But it seems counterintuitive to, if we're allowed 79, not for special events, but 79, why not at least leave it to the 11? And then 69, just for, thrown out for discussion, not that my daughter's getting ready to get married, she's only 17, but I, she's not a bridezilla either. But I could see midnight for a wedding isn't crazy and when we're doing nine events in 15 months, Bob, is that how many? Nine in almost a year and a half, I don't feel it's excessive. So in my mind, the compromise is keep the decibel where it's at, just go along with that, but then drop it between 11 and 12, but allow the event to go on to 12, just for discussion.
Drop it to what?
To 69, like Councilman Brown said. It's not a motion, we're just discussing here. We have a motion on the table that we're-
In your essence, just extending it one more hour.
Correct.
Okay, so let's be clear on what you're saying. What about the subwoofers?
I'm not, we're talking-
Are we still talk? I know, I just, I just want to clarify where we're at at this point. We're at no subwoofers?
Oh, boy.
We're at-
Is that a third amendment though?
No, I'm not, we're having discussion.
We're still discussing. All right, and decibel, 79 to 11?
79 to 11, let them go till midnight, but-
And then mid, and then 11 to 12, it goes down to 69? And he still turns the speakers? All right, now is that a amendment to the amendment?
No, we're just talking here.
Well, we can't really discuss it if you want to.
Yes, I like that, no, I don't, what did you think, how about you, you know?
Well, I think you should put it in the form of an amendment and we'll see if there's any support.
A third layer? All right.
Can we do that? Come on, we're on a third layer.
Madam Mayor, typically only one amendment at a time, you either voted up or down.
All right, we'll go back to Dennis's then, Councilman Brown's.
Did he have a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that one is no subwoofers.
No.
What's your, what's your?
Speakers turned.
His motion was the main motion with the exception of the 69 decibels between-
Yeah, I just want to make sure that everybody knows what the, okay.
That's-
No subwoofers to 11:00.
Note, no subwoofers at all, turn the speakers toward the party. 79 decibels to 10:00, from 10:00 to 11:00, 69 decibels, party's over.
Okay.
Start the wedding an hour early.
Okay, everybody got that? No subwoofers, turn the speakers, 79 to 10, and then between 10 and 11, 69. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. And any other discussion on that? If not, I'll say, let's do a roll call.
Councilmember DePorter.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Legay?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
No.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor six to one.
Okay, we're done.
Any motion?
Now the other motion?
Yeah, now you have the amended motion. That was the amendment.
The main motion.
I now have the main motion, okay. Well, I thought that we voted on, okay.
I was voting on the amendment.
Okay, so now we have the main emotion, motion and the second.
Could we repeat the main motion?
Sure.
By the motioner?
Same as the amendment.
Yeah, exactly. It was almost a-
Very, very good. The motion is to approve the continued administrative issuance of a temporary use permit for outdoor events at Copperwind up until 11:00 PM. Speakers must face resort building, no subwoofers, overall volume will be no greater than 79 decibels up to 10:00 PM and reduced to 69 decibels between 10 and 11:00 PM.
That was-
That was Dennis's.
That was Councilman Brown's.
It's the main motion as amended by Dennis.
I incorporated it all into the main motion. So that is, that's, we had a main motion, we amended the main motion, that was the amended main motion. Is that correct, our town attorney?
Exactly.
Okay, very good.
Councilman Brown just seconded that.
No. We voted on the amendment, now vote on the main.
You have to vote on the main motion, but the main motion-
You're not the attorney.
Okay. Madam Mayor, the main motion as amended, I believe was accurately stated, so all you need to do is vote.
All right. Can we do all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor of the motion?
Sure.
Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Mayor six one.
Okay, if you all understand that, you can go now. We're done with that.
I don't think we're done.
All right. Whoa.
You can go to 11:00. You can go to 11:00.
Okay, the museum has really hung in there with us.
Yes, yes.
Can we just say yes and then you go home?
You could if you liked, I don't mind.
It's consideration of a request by the L.L. and Crookshank River of Time Museum Board of Directors regarding proposed short and long-term improvements to the facility and future construction plans for a new museum. Are you having any outdoor music? Let's get that clear.
We are not planning to have any outdoor music at this time.
Okay, all right.
Certainly not ones that go beyond 11:00. However, while I was sitting here, I did look up when the subwoofer was invented, the first, the first patent was taken out in 1964, so.
Thank you. That originally wasn't my question, it was just, how long were they using it? But that's good to know.
Exactly.
Okay, anybody who wants to leave, please do so quietly and we will now proceed with our museum.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh and members of town council. My name is Luke Bate, I'm the executive director of the River of Time Museum. And, let's see, we still have a few, we still have a few board members, volunteers, museum supporters who've hung in here all the way till 9:30. And if they would do me a favor and please rise.
Wow, you guys stayed up late.
Exactly. And now they make up 50% of the audience, right? Okay, anyway, so this team and other contributors who couldn't be here tonight have been instrumental in developing a five-year strategic plan that we call the River of Time Museum 2020 Vision. We spent the last year implementing many changes and tonight we'd like to outline our plan to the council so that we can proceed with the next steps. Over the last year, we started by creating a new community-focused mission. We've done a lot of renovation with the main exhibit space with the interactive elements and technology. We have new and expanded community partnerships. We've incorporated science, technology, engineering, and mathematics or STEM into our exhibits and programs. We've doubled our public hours. We have a new comprehensive website, so we've created more accessibility to the physical location and to the virtual location. This year, we hosted over 200 students, students and visitors, as well as a six-month exhibit from the Fountain Hills Unified School District 4th grade. And our average yearly visitation is over 1,000 people. Over the course of this last year and in terms of getting more and more feedback and learning about all of these long-term plans through the Vision Fountain Hills group and other interested parties, we think that we can do better. We have a greater responsibility to the town of Fountain Hills. And in order to do more things, to create, to continue the town's reputation as a playable location, to be a more, to create a greater attraction for younger families in that younger demographic, to be a greater resource to the town's education system, we have a really expansive, long-term plan. We want to make a new museum. Our goal is to integrate the existing museum into a future civic facility that accommodates a broad range of interests, becomes a community hub, and an economic engine that completes the centennial circle. Now, we're not ready to do this just yet and as we work towards this goal, we have developed a plan to reuse our existing museum space in a way that will help meet the community needs in, over the short term, and then leave the town with a useful resource when we relocate. So the space that we're talking about is of course the museum library building and The image on the right-hand side is an aerial view of the museum library building, that's 20,000 square feet. The museum portion of it, which is on the south end and has that odd square, has that odd square shape, which is catty corner or off-center. All right, so, so our principal public space, as we said, is 5,000 square feet, so one-quarter of the museum library building. The principal public space is in that odd off, out-of-line square space, I sometimes call it the main square. That's 1,500, that's 1,500 square feet with a maximum capacity of 123 people. Now, that's our legal capacity, that's not our practical capacity, which is quite, which is significantly less. The additional support spaces we have, like the storage areas, the offices and such, they actually don't meet the existing need of the museum as they, in their, for their intended purpose. And we have this great patio space just outside that's 900 square feet and we're not able to actually make regular use of it because there are no easy access points to, between the main exhibit space and the patio, at least not currently. When the building was originally constructed, it was planned to have three points of entry and exit between those two areas. So what we are proposing to do in our first phase of renovation is to open those areas and complete that original plan. So we have three, three doorways between the main exhibit space and the patio area. That way, we can start using it more regularly, we can do a better job of integrating the interior and the exterior exhibits and the programs we have, we can start hosting community events, we can do classes, we can do other projects. We've been talking with the community garden folks about having some test beds out on the patio to start building a visibility for that project. So it really opens up the opportunity. But that's only the outside space. We really need to do something with our inside space as well. Our original exhibit design from 2002 has a lot of rigid structural elements. So these are things like partitions, sectional walls, platforms, these are the sorts of things that we built in to hold our displays and exhibit components. These, these are, make it really difficult to, these are very difficult to move and relocate in the space and they cut up the space which make it impractical for us to hold any more than 20, between 20 and 30 people. So our practical capacity is significantly less than our legal capacity. So what we want to do is basically remove all of those elements out. We want to redesign the exhibit space to its original open floor plan. And now the main space will have a new flexible modular exhibit environment. This will allow us to have a changing experience. One of the most common evaluations we get from town folks is nothing ever changes there. So we need to make the kind of space that allows, that gives us the ability to change. And with that more open exhibit space, we can actually fit more people into the museum. So as we, as we're getting through that part of Phase 1, we also want to make a few minor adjustments to the outside of the building, just to improve our visibility and differentiate us from the library a little bit. It's hard to see in this picture, but that's not unusual because it's hard to see the word museum on the building. The only place that they're separately designated is viewed from the La Montana Road. And what we propose to do is relocate the letters that are easily visible to the south side of our big square so that they can be easily seen from both La Montana and El Lago. And when folks pull into the parking lot, it's quite obvious to where, to them where the museum is. Also, we're going to put our, an additional sign over our designated entrance through the current location of the museum store. Now, this will really help us in terms of managing more people, adding to our community visibility. But if we're, if we're creating access to the patio space, it offers a new opportunity, something really different. And that's what we call, and that's, that's our second phase, which is a retrofit of our existing space. So that allows us to actually open a grand entrance, a really separate and dedicated entrance, not confused with the library, right off of the parking lot, extremely convenient for visitors, very clear where to go. People can, people, when they pull up, go right through, see all kinds of zariscape or ethno-botanical garden elements in the patio space. We're still using it for programs. And what's really interesting about this possibility is what we can do with the inside. Because if we have this as our main space, then we have to invert the way the public currently uses the River of Time Museum. And if we do that, then maybe we can actually have even more space. So in Phase, the second part of Phase 2 is, again, addressing the inside. Here, we are actually changing original construction of the building, so taking out those, those office areas and library spaces from the main square and increasing it to a whole 2,000 square feet of exhibit space. We might actually now be able to fit 123 people in here. The offices have been relocated to the areas that were originally storage storerooms. Our store space has been relocated closer to this new entrance. It's in our, it's, the store space is at least doubled so we can have more items, increase revenue for the museum. And in relocating all of our artifacts and archives from their original storage locations, we put them out. They're now either in the exhibit spaces or they're in these other areas off, from these areas which were the original store spaces for a, for a research library. So people can come in and actually learn about the Lower Verdi River Valley. So sitting there thinking to yourself, well, this is great, what, what's the timeframe for all of this stuff? Well, it's, there's a reason why it's the 2020 Vision- Well, it's, there's a reason why, it's the Twenty-Twenty Vision. We're hoping to complete all of Phase One and Two by the end of twenty-twenty. So Phase One is our renovation phase, and we have, we have gotten a commitment from the River of Time Museum Foundation to pay for the entire cost of Phase One. So, the first part of that phase, to open that patio access, we, we'd like to complete by October of two thousand and sixteen. That's when we transfer back to our, our, our longer public hours. So having that in place would be really helpful. And then we would have the major exhibit components and opening up that space to a more flexible exhibit design, ready, ready by the end of twenty-seventeen. Phase Two, then, we begin in May of two thousand and eighteen. May is when we go into our summer hours, so we're open less to the public. We start that retrofit, taking out the big, the, the walls and all of those other elements, and we complete that by twenty-twenty. During these two phases, we are also planning for that integration, that larger, that larger museum facility. And what we would like to do is time all of this together for December fifteenth, twenty-twenty. December fifteenth is the, is the day that the Fountain Hills Fountain was turned on for the first time on nineteen, in nineteen seventy. So, this date will be the fiftieth anniversary of the birth of Fountain Hills. So, we probably won't have a new building in place by then, but we can dedicate the space to a groundbreaking and really use the existing space to build up to that event. And with that, I'll take your questions.
Will you still be the head of the museum at that time?
That's a good question.
Okay, Councilman DePorter.
I just wanted to say, Luke and Debbie, ever since you've come to town, I, I have seen all those changes.
Oh, thank you.
Children there, even all the way down to the cool fountain model that the kids so love to splash other people water. The introduction of STEM, it's a tremendous community asset. I see it driving a lot of traffic to our town. I know of people who broaden up their, their school districts from the Tempe area, and I'm sure they arrange it through you, so you know all about it. But I see it as a tremendous resource, and of course, and I'm sure other people have stuff to say, but in the interest of time, I'm happy to present a motion when the time's right.
Question, if I may. Phase One, you basically said that the cost is going to be covered by the foundation?
Mm-hmm.
How about Phase Two?
Well, at that point, we will come, when we have our, at that point, when we have a better understanding of what's, what the relationship with the town is, we would come back and readdress that with you. But we haven't, we, we've only, we haven't gotten any specific funding. We do have an idea of how much that will cost us, but we haven't identified that particular phase.
And how much will that cost you?
Overall, the Phases One and Two will cost about fifty thousand dollars.
How about Phase Three?
Phase Three, oh, eh, ten million bucks? No, we, we really don't know, but we're so early in this planning and development stage. We're really, at this point, putting the ideas together, pulling these different resources. So, we will learn more about the cost and ongoing support of that as we proceed through Phases One and Two.
I appreciate your vision, and I, I second Councilman DePorter's observations. I think you've done a tremendous job since you've been with the museum. I was just get, trying to get a sense for, you know, what, what the cost would be to relocate, and I guess as you get closer to that, you'll, you'll, you'll be able to share those numbers with us. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I move to approve the short-term and intermediate-term phases of improvements requested at the River of Time Museum and direct the River of Time Museum to undergo an extensive feasibility study before requesting town council approval of the property located at the site previously designated as a performing arts center in the Civic Center complex.
Mayor, second.
All right, your motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And, and I just want to thank all your volunteers, because I know you've got some very dedicated volunteers that are there greeting everyone, and the docents.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
They work very hard to learn all about the Fountain Hills, and I know I brought my mayor's youth council through theirs, and they were, they, they learned something about their own town's history, which they didn't know, so.
Absolutely. One of the things that we, in a discussion I had with Dr. Sweeney, we were looking at the opportunities for younger volunteers to come in and do other types of work, like designing the new graphics, coming up with, coming up with new interpretations and other work like that, so...
Great.
So we're really, we're looking forward to that level of growth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, where are we now? Okay, discussion with directions to staff regarding the possible submission of proposed policy ideas to the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, I don't think we have anything.
No, I was just going to say, Mayor and Council, due to the late hour, if you have anything you wish to submit to the League, please send those to me, and I will be sure to send them on behalf of the council to the League.
Okay, great, and council direction to the manager, we don't have anything, but we have summary town manager's report, number ten.
Very quickly, at the last council meeting, you'll recall, the gentleman who was speaking before the council about the javelina attack on his wife, he had mentioned that he thought there was a cause and effect with the wash maintenance as to having had some impact on the javelina attack. In discussing this matter with Amy Burnett, who you heard from earlier tonight, she felt like this does not have any impact on the attack. It's clearly the feeding of the animals and such. But I also promised to come back and explain the wash maintenance schedule, so I'll just quickly explain what that is. We have over seven hundred acres of washes that the town maintains. The, as you know, the washes are primarily our drainage system here in town, and so the purpose of what we do with the maintenance is we clean out the brush that possibly blocks the water from flowing, and also try to do that in terms of reducing the possibility of brush that might contribute to wildfires. The seven hundred acres, we have a four-year cycle, so every four years, we will basically get to every single wash. The gentleman's wash that was nearby his home on Malta is scheduled to be done and completed in November of this year. When we start up, it will be the, the top priority once we get started again in November. So with that, if there's any other questions, I'll move on to the next report.
He had mentioned, Bob, when he came up, that the, he felt they hadn't been working in the last seven months, but you did look into that?
Yes, in fact, what it is, he said, I think there was a misunderstanding because the Artistic Landscape, which is the firm that actually does the contacted-out labor, it's a seven-month process, they start in November and they complete in, in May. So that is a seven-month period, and so somehow he was thinking that they were just in that one area for seven months and hadn't made really any progress, but our, Raymond Reese, our facilities and environmental manager, does oversee and, and does monitor their work, and, and he said that they were making a lot of progress in town. The, the next item is, just wanted to update you, I'm sure that the council's fully aware of this. At the last council meeting, I believe it was Councilmember Magazine that asked for an update on the Fourth of July event. We had our second meeting with Fountain Hills Events, Inc., and we had some discussion about making some changes to the event so that it was a free event, no alcohol, more family-friendly, and the Fountain Hills Events, Inc., decided to go ahead and allow the town to, to move forward with the event as proposed because the model that they work from really needs additional revenue in order to pay for all the other amenities that they wish to have. So, we will not have the need, as a result of not having beer or alcohol sold, you don't need to have the, the gates and the, and the fences around the site, nor will you need to have the, the number of volunteers that have to work the site in order to work the beer and also the ticket-taking. So, with that, we will have more plans coming in the future to share with you, but it's going to be more of a back-to-basics Fourth of July event. With that, I would be able to answer any questions you may have.
No, okay. I'll just hold off on doing my report next, next, well, be prepared, it'll be long then. Don't complain next time, so let me have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Bye.